All right, all members are present here tonight. Gentlemen, we do have one item that we will need to amend the agenda. We had a purchase order that was submitted to us late on Friday evening. So I do have a purchase order 2022-1953 for a purchase of a couple of vehicles for our taxi service office. And so if you would, we'd like to insert that on the second page after purchase order number 1909. We would have purchase order 2022-1953 right above the Georgia Transportation Grant. So that's the only modification to the agenda that I'm aware of. Is there any other modifications to our agenda? Okay. Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept this one modification and approve the agenda? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, you do have the minutes from our prior meeting back on July the 14th that was held here, 7:00 PM. Clerk has prepared the minutes. Is there any questions or concerns on those minutes of the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk?
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Now at this time, this is what we're really all here for tonight. We could actually probably almost just go home right after this. We've got some young ladies here. Ladies, I'd like for y'all to come up here. I'm gonna give you each one of these. Open it up. You wanna come stand right about here and hold that? Okay? We're gonna ask our board members to come up here and join us as well. If you wanna come stand right here by her. Y'all are so nice and quiet. Stand right there. Must have some good parents. All right, here's you one. I already had these open shut. Here's you one. All right, y'all are gonna one day see these young ladies in the big leagues. I have no doubt about it. I'm gonna read this proclamation here tonight. This is a proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioners in recognition of the achievement whereas the Rock Springs Athletic Association is a volunteer-led community organization formed in 1978 to provide area youth with recreational opportunities. And whereas the 6U Rock Springs Hot Shots softball team worked persistently over the past three years to learn the fundamentals of softball, patience, determination, and how to encourage others, and the teamwork makes the best work. Whereas the 6U Rock Springs Hot Shots completed a successful undefeated season. There we go. And posted seven tournament championships this past spring and summer. It gets better. Whereas the 6U Rock Springs Hot Shot won the Georgia Dizzy Dean Softball State Championship. Okay. Whereas the following young ladies represented Walker County as state tournament and World Series with good sportsmanship, a positive attitude, determination, and dedication to the team. Danica Crabtree, Harper Taylor, Trinity Durham, Iris Whittenburg, Leila Gidio? Mido, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Reagan Gil? Joa, I'm sorry. Kingsley Harley? Hughley. Chapel Ragsdale, Lily Bloodworth, and Oakley Tatum. I, Shanny K Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the achievement of the Rock Springs Hot Shot 6U softball team deserves public acclaim and recognition by the community. Sign and seal the 28th day of July 2022. Y'all give him another hint. So which three of you prepared a speech? Nobody? Now, we've got some great young ladies here, and we thank you parents for bringing them out here tonight, and your dedication, and to be an independent volunteer rec league and to go and win a World Series, that's a big deal. And so we wanted to have these young ladies come out tonight and be a part of this and recognize them, and hopefully one day when they get older, they'll look back and remember us old guys. All right? So we're gonna get a photo real quick. So Joe, you're gonna have to tell us where to go. What about, we got the coaches here? We need the coaches to come up here. We're gonna give you this one here. I know you've got at least one. Is everybody in?
I think so.
Hot Shots, if you'll look over this direction, okay? Ready? Three, two, one. Oh, who blinked? One more. Ready? Three, two, one. Thank you. And you, young ladies and family, are welcome to stay, or you're welcome to get out of here. Good job. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started back as they file out. We do have our public hearings next. This is the public hearing for Eugene Hester, request a partial rezon of 4.33 acres from R2 to C1. To C1 for property located at 126 Black Circle Spur, North Highway 27, Lafitte, Georgia, 30728, tax map in partial, 0-329-1-021A. Is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak in opposition of this request? Any opposition on just this one? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, is anyone here that wants to speak in favor of this? You don't have to, but you're welcome to. Anybody wants to speak in favor? Okay. Hearing and seeing no one, we're gonna move to the next one. Okay, the next one is Remanda Melton, request rezon from A1 to R2 for property located at 1890 Kensington Road, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax map in partial number 0-274-2-001. Anyone that wants to speak in opposition on this one? Yes, sir, on the front row, if you would come up to the podium. We ask if you would state your name for the record.
Okay, I'm Alan Durham. I live next door to this property. It borders my property on the south side. And I oppose it simply because I bought my place from the Bob and Jim Andrews back in 1974. I bought that for a home place. It's A1, agricultural, that's what I wanted in the area. And so they're wanting to change it to a R2. And I had an issue with them last week. They piled a bunch of construction tires and bricks and blocks and stuff out of houses that they flipped in my back, just about in my back door. And the code enforcement came out Monday, and they cleaned it up. And I would like for it to stay A1 agricultural, because our whole neighborhood is that, and we got some nice homes in there that's opposed to it also. So I'd like to see it stay A1 agricultural. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, I saw another hand. Yes, ma'am, please. Come up, please. You as well, tell us your name, please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Beth Rowan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live across the street from the Meltons. If you drive down Kensington Road, you see rural land with pastures, trees, homes, cattle, chickens, and goats. We bought our 25 acres to have a home and enjoy the beautiful Georgia country. Our land is former farmland that once had dairy cows and then cattle, and now we have a big garden and a horse on the land. I'm concerned that if the board approves the zoning to R2, it will change the feel of the area that my neighbors and I all love. The Meltons may have good intentions. They talked about in the last meeting building homes for their children on their land, which I thought they could do as it already is zoned. But as we all know, things happen, and people change their minds, and if it is zoned R2, anything could happen. So if the land gets rezoned to R2, we are not sure what the Meltons may do, and there is the possibility that the rural feel of our neighborhood would change for the worst. So I respectfully ask the board to oppose this zoning request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Yes, sir, in the back?
Yes, hi. My name's Joe Thayer. My wife Rachel and I live at 1802 Kensington Road. It's property that's very close to the property that's under discussion tonight. We moved here in 2013, and we bought this property with the intent of living in the country. We chose property that was far, far from town. Nearest town's Chickamauga, five miles away. It was all zoned agricultural. All our neighbors around us is agricultural. It's an agricultural area. That's the kind of life we wanted to live. And I thought we were buying property far enough out in the country where, at least in my lifetime, I wouldn't see urban sprawl coming and see high-density housing practically next door to me. I think that housing right now, at this point in time, doesn't belong on Kensington Road in this area. As my neighbor just mentioned, I think it changes the entire dynamic of the country living and what's out there now. There's still people running cattle, still making a living out in this area in agriculture. And I just don't think opening up for a subdivision on this road that's not built for it right now is the thing to do. So I ask that it stay agricultural.
Okay, yes, sir. You're next.
My name's Jeff Rowan. I live across the street from the Meltons. Thank you for the opportunity to have a say here. I appreciate it. This kind of thing is difficult for me, because I never want to disparage someone. But the people that are up here speaking are representing the people that are gonna be living here, and the Meltons are moving. And they've articulated their plans to multiple people. They have multiple other homes. They rent homes, they have a lake home, and they're moving. And we're gonna be living there, hopefully for decades, Lord willing. The, I've got two concerns. One is that, as Joe said, this is permission to put multifamily housing there. There's nothing else like that on Kensington Road. Kensington's almost an iconic road. It's very pretty. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. Farms up and down it, homes, nice homes that are well-kept on big pieces of land, and a subdivision or apartment buildings, whatever, so you can do that, not be commensurate with duplexes with the environment that's there and the reason all the people live there. I work in Chattanooga. I drive 30 minutes to work. When I took the job, moved here from North Carolina, all my peers there said, you need to live in Tennessee, because there's no tax. And I said, we found the perfect place on Kensington Road. I'm gonna drive to work, I'm gonna pay the taxes, because it's beautiful. I'd like to get cattle there. We have a horse, as my wife said already, and we want to raise our kids and grandkids there. The other concern I have is just that they're uphill of us. We have a spring on our property, actually 100 springs in a small area that go right into Chickamauga Creek. When it rains, the ground and a lot of our property over toward that end almost becomes like rubbery. You can walk on it if we get a heavy rain, and it's clear that that water's coming down from that property. And I'm very concerned about a bunch of septic systems going up there. I don't know how anybody could possibly know what the effect of that would be unless you excavated the area and looked underneath it there. But I'm very concerned about that as well. So for all these reasons, I oppose the rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in opposition on this request? Okay, seeing or hearing no one, anyone in favor that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come up. You can come, yeah, come across. Yeah, it's fine, there's no top quarters in here.
Am I allowed to give?
Sure, you can.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
My name's Remanda Melton, and I own the property that we're referred to as 1890 Kensington Road. What I handed you out today is the draft of the survey that Compton drafted. We originally, what we applied for was for the rezoning from A1 to R2. And the reason we applied for that from A1 to R2 is because the connecting property to the south is zoned R2. And it was our understanding that we had to apply for what the property was connecting. We didn't know that we could apply for R1. We thought we had to apply for R2 or R3, because that's what it connected to. And the whole reason we're wanting to rezon it is to sell our house. We had no intention to ever build any apartments, and that was a rumor that got started. I'm not sure where that got start, well, actually, I do know where that got started. There was a gentleman clearing off some trees, and he said something to Mr. Durham, that we were gonna build some apartments as a joke. But that was never any intention. And to put that rumor to rest, I had attorney draw up some restrictions, and there's a copy of our deed that we'll be glad to record to put in there. No mobile homes or manufactured homes, no recreational vehicles, no family or community residential homes, no condos, duplexes, triplexes, or apartments, and no junkyards. We have no intentions at all to do any of that. Our goal is just to sell our house and the 1.42 acres that our properties, our house sits on. Our goal is, we want to keep the rest of the land right now, and that's what we want to do. So that's our whole primary goal, is just to sell that house and the 1.42 acres.
So what is your long-range plan with the rest of the land?
Well, right now, we just want to keep the land. We do have four children. We have two that's just graduated college. One is married, he's a teacher at the middle school, and one works for DNR. He's the bar biologist. They both live out in the country. We live off Chamberlain down there. We had an Airbnb, and that's where we moved. We're empty nesters, so we didn't need that big house. So that's the reason for moving. We had, he went to Gordon Lee. He's graduated. He's going to North Georgia over in Delonaga. And so we might all, our goal, we might all build on that property, but we just don't want to get rid of it right now. We want that option, and that's the reason we want to keep that land. It's got our roadbed and our barn back there that goes beside that house, so we want that option. But we don't want to say in stone, yes, we're absolutely, we're gonna build for us and our kids, but we want that option, that we have that, that we can build on it. Or we will, but we don't, we're not gonna build apartments, but we want to say, yes, if we want to build single-family homes, we can build on these four parcels that's there. We can already build on three. We can do that now, but we want that other track to be able to do that. And we have our roadbed and go to our barn. That's what we want to be able to do.
So how much would be left of that track if you cut out that 1.42 with the house? How much property left?
It'll be a little over 5 acres.
So it would still be over 5 acres?
Yes, sir, it sure would.
So why wouldn't you, so that track wouldn't be affected either? It would be over, so all the tracks are over 5 acres?
Yes, sir, they sure are.
Even if you take this 1.4 out, there's still 5?
There's 7.44 acres on that track right there.
Okay, I just can't see it clearly.
Yes, sir, I've got the big track.
No, that's fine, no, I just want a clarification.
But the total track is almost 25 acres.
It is, yes, sir.
And you're gonna take the house, house and 1.42 off, correct?
Off of one that's, there are four different tracks. It's 5, 7, 8, 5, 7, and 8, yes, sir. And it's the one that's 7.44 acres that we just want to take, that's fenced in, and that's the reason, that's where Compton, when he looked at it, he just took 75 feet of road frontage, because that's what you gotta have, the minimum, is what they said you gotta have, and that's where the roadbed that goes up beside it to the barn. And we kept the rest of it, it's all fenced in, that area that's fenced in around the house. It's a nice wood picket fence that my husband built. It goes down the front and down the side, so.
Is the property to the north, what is it zoned?
Everything, all of that is A1.
North of you is A1?
Yes, sir.
And east of you is A1?
Yes.
And west, just south is R2 now, right?
There's like eight parcels, this, R2 and R3, all of that, and then there's a subdivision behind us that's R2 and R3. It's a combo, it's a combo of duplexes, mobile homes, and houses back there. Mr. Wallen developed that subdivision.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to think of the name of it back there. It's off of 136.
It is.
I know what you're talking about. So y'all's request to rezon everything to an R2 really isn't what you needed to do to start?
No. But we were advised that's what we needed to do, because it connected to R2.
So you wish you would have done what?
I guess R1. I mean, we're just wanting to sell the house and the 1.42 acres. That's our primary goal right now, and to be able to keep the rest of that track. I'm up to suggestions. I'm open.
Do the people, the ones of you that spoke in opposition, y'all are, you do understand and are aware that those individual tracks that there are five acres on, that they would have the right to build on those three or four tracks that are there, correct?
Yes, but I'd like, y'all could explain to me what a R2 is.
Well, R2, and Mr. Brown, you come up here, please. I don't want to mince my words here. Give us an explanation of R2 versus R1 and R3.
R1 is your most respected zoning in Walker County. R2 allows for mobile homes, duplexes, single-family, whereas R1, there's no mobile homes allowed.
And R1, there's not?
No, there's not allowed for duplexes or triplexes either. So R1 is strictly single-family. Because I'm very familiar with the area, very familiar. I know that there are residences on Kensington Road that aren't on five acres, but they're nice homes that are on nice, you know, they're nice, it's a nice area. I've watched them develop my whole life, so I'm very familiar with it. Okay, so did you understand the R2?
Thank you.
So basically, if you take back, I'm just trying to make some sense out of it and trying to get some direction for everybody. So if you take it all back out in the context, what y'all would have, should have done is went and taken that one track, left the rest agricultural. All of that's agricultural, it stays agricultural. And then you would have asked for a variance on the five-acre agricultural minimum, is that right, Brown?
Yes, because you're dividing the house, see, the property touching the house is all ag property, so the way the law is written, you would have to have five acres to sell with a house, I understand.
Right, without a variance.
Correct.
So what they would have asked for would have been a variance on that one track of ground for the 1.42 acres, which would still leave a five-acre track that is agricultural. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir. It's 7.44 acres.
Okay. So you would have the ability to build, how many other, so there's four other, there's four tracks total?
Total, yes, sir.
Okay, so you'd have the ability to build four houses?
Yes, sir, do you want to say this?
No, that's fine.
I do. I don't have a drawing.
This is, this is dirty, but this is the track right here that the house is on, it's 7.44.
And you want to cut that one?
It'll kind of have a little skinny 75 feet right here for the roadbed, because our barn's back here.
And this is A1?
Yes, sir.
And this is A1?
Yes, sir. And all this is R2 and R3. This is Jerry Ellis, that's where that subdivision.
Yeah, Jerry Ellis.
So if you split this and pull off the 1.42, you said there was 75 feet for it, does it still leave you at least 75 feet for the other?
Oh, it's about 300.
Okay.
It's on the second page.
This is more than 100.
It's on, I've got a, Compton did a preliminary, right there it is. It's all of that road frontage out there, I'm sorry.
Okay, so a couple hundred feet.
Yes, sir. We have over 1,200 feet of road frontage on Kensington Road. It's all of this.
Well, wait a minute, let's see here. So if this is the house, you've got several hundred feet here.
That's what will be going with the property.
But you're splitting off here, this shows 50 feet.
It's a 50-foot easement.
Or easement, okay.
I think it's 75. 75 at the road frontage, and it necks down to 50 feet, which is required for utilities.
Okay, I see there's a curve there.
Yeah, that's what's required for utilities.
Did you see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that makes sense.
Picture the subdivision behind it there, which it is, it is a hodgepodge of duplexes, single-family, and mobile homes.
Any other questions on the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak in favor of this? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move forward. So the next one is Ronald Sadler, request rezon from R3 to A1 for property located at 136 Chatlet?
Chalet.
Chalet Drive, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map in partial, 0-126-003. Anyone wanting to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing no one, anyone wants to speak for this request? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the next one. Randy and Mary Harden, request rezon from A1 to R2 for property located at 833 McIntyre Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30739, tax map in partial number 0-356-041. Anyone to speak against this one? Any opposition? Okay, anyone in favor of the one on McIntyre that would like to speak? Yes, sir, please come forth.
My name's Randy Harden. I lived 833 McIntyre Road for
of duplexes, single-family, and mobile homes.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Anyone else wanted to speak in favor of this? Okay. Hearing none, we're going to move forward. So, the next one is Ronald Sadler requests a rezone from R3 to A1 for property located at 136 Chatlet, or?
Chalet.
Chalet, Chalet Drive, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map impartial, 0-126-003. Anyone wanting to speak in opposition? Okay. Hearing no one, anyone wants to speak for this request? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go to the next one. Randy and Mary Harden requests a rezone from A1 to R2 for property located at 833 McIntyre Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30739, tax map impartial number 0-356-041. Anyone to speak against this one? Any opposition? Okay. Anyone in favor of the one on McIntyre that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
My name's Randy Harden. I lived 833 McIntyre Road for 28 years. Last year, me and my wife's decided to, at the age of retirement, that we're going to take part of our property, which is 22, 24 acres, and bless our kids and our grandkids with it. So, you can see if you're looking at the plaque, that we've already divided off two separate plaques. One's like 7 point something acres. The other's like 9 point something acres. And that left me with 5.41 acres there. And what I was wanting to do was I called Compton to come back and survey off a couple of acres in the front for my son to build a house. And at the time, I didn't know that you had to have a minimum of five acres or you'd have to have it rezoned. So, or if I did know that beginning, I would have done all this completely different. But I didn't, and after we'd already done it. So, what I'm trying to do is get the road frontage to a couple acres there on the front, rezoned to R1, where my son can build a single-family home.
Okay, this is a request to rezone from A1 to R2.
Well, R2, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And is the surrounding property there all zoned A1 currently?
Uh, what was it? You looked up today?
A block of the street, and it's R1 or R2.
Mm-hmm. And then a block up the road. I think my neighbor, Andy Brown, was in here last month and had at one point something acres rezoned from A1 to R1 or 2. I'm not sure.
Any questions from the board?
And then, would your driveway then come across that tract?
That driveway is a right-of-way for all the property in there. How's a 50-foot right-of-way? It's been surveyed off, which goes to my property and to the other two properties that are already divided off.
So, it is on the north side, on your north line, the driveway comes? I can't quite see it on the map.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. You, you can see where there's triple lines right there on the map. That's the right-of-way coming in McIntyre Road. Right here. This is McIntyre Road. There's the right-of-way coming in to the...
So, which, which route?
Did, did you, did you say, Mr. Harden, that you, I see it was calling from A1 to R2. But it's R1, what we want there, if we're going to build, your sons want to build a house, so would that be right?
Yeah, I'm his daughter-in-law, so we're the ones that are, that are going to build. I'm not really sure what the difference is. I know you said R1 was the most restricted.
Well, that's the thing. So, R1 is a, is a single-family residence. That's what you're wanting to do.
Yes, sir.
You go to R2 and R3, then, then you open up the door for the mobile homes and the duplexes, which is nothing wrong with, in the right place. But...
Right.
You don't have anything against that. It's just...
Right. Yeah, and I, yeah, I brought the house plan and the perk test and all of that for you guys to look at.
Yeah, it's a single-family dwell is what we're looking for.
Right.
Okay, so, so here again, so, when you requested the R2, is it just what, what you were told to do, or you thought that's what we needed to do?
We thought, we thought.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to get, get a grip on it. No problem.
Right. Can I hand this out right quick? And I was going to say something just right quick, if you don't care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is just, I wanted you guys to have some idea of what we were, we're doing. Okay. Again, I'm Kristy Harden. I'm actually Randy's daughter-in-law. And just like others have said, I'd like to thank you for allowing us both to speak. My husband couldn't be here. He got stuck at work. But we both lived in Walker County since 2016. We moved from Catoosa County. We've raised seven children, and all of our own, and have left home but one, my 13-year-old son. We've always wanted to build a small farmhouse where we would retire. My in-laws were gracious and offered to sell us a few acres of their property so we could do just that, having no idea that it was a zoning issue. We put our larger home on the market, which was just right down the road, and it sold in 24 hours. We closed in mid-June. Again, we just want to build one single-family home on the property. We have our finalized house plans, which you have, a successful perk, a perk test, and we've been pre-approved for our construction loan. The builder, who's Eric Edwards, is ready to start when we are. We're now living with family until we figure out what our next steps are. We would love to build our home on family land. This property would keep our 13-year-old in his school zone, and close to his grandparents, brother, sister-in-law, and cousins who live on the property. We appreciate your consideration of the rezone from A1 to R2 so we can build our dream home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wants to speak either for or against that one? I'll make a time. Okay. The next one on the agenda is BLH Enterprise LLC requesting rezone from R2 to A1 for property located at 1183 Arnold Road, Rock Springs, 30739, tax map impartial 0-326-2-025. Any opposition on this one on Arnold Road? Yes, ma'am, in the back, please come forward. No, her, she, her first?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I was going to see if I can, if it would be useful, I'll help try to do that for everybody, if they need it. If it's your neighbors.
Okay.
My name is Ann Turley, and I own two properties on Arnold Road. One, a Joins, the property requesting the rezone. That's where I grew up. I've been there since I was born in 1960. Yeah, you can count my age. I don't care. Anyway, and then, when I got married, my father owned property across the road, and we built a house there. So, I have strong roots in that community, so to speak. I am opposed to this being turned into a charp pit. It has been a charp pit many, many years ago, before it was owned by these people. There's already a charp pit in Rock Spring. We have, already have problems with this property. As you can see from the photographs, the first one shows where it washes the road now. We've had to have the county out there to scrape the mud off the road where it just washes from. They haven't scraped it lately, but they have been out there. The next picture shows the lady that's back in the back, her property, where her driveway is affected by this property, where it washes out to mud. The next picture is another entrance to that property, and you can see where it washes out into the road. Also, you go to the next picture, and you can see where it washes down the other side of the road and into the, the neighbor's property there. Runoff has always been a problem there forever. So, it's nothing new. One of my biggest concerns about this is if it's rezoned agriculture and that mining pit is allowed to go there, the proposed plan is for a subdivision, but when? It could be a charp mine for 10 years. We have buses that run that road. We have parents from Saddle Ridge that run that road, besides the people who actually live on it. The speed limit is 25. There's blind curves. There's just all kinds of issues with the entrances to this property as it is already. But also, there's a problem on the property back on Long Hollow. I know there's been stormwater issues from that property to their property before. I just want to say that, as I say, I am opposed to it. I know that there's plans for a subdivision, but there's no time limit on that. And there's no guarantee that the property won't be sold and stay a charp mine forever. There's no guarantee that, that subdivision will ever develop. And there's also an issue of the studies that were presented in the planning meeting last week. And at that time, we were told that those plans would not be looked at even until it was approved or not approved. Well, that doesn't fly well. I mean, that's like asking us to say, oh, here's your bag, that's, you know, that's what you get for your salary for the year, and you take your chances on what's in it. And I don't think that's fair to the neighbors. I don't think that's fair to Walker County, to have to make a decision based on sight unseen things that's not been approved even by the state for it to happen in the first place. But it could be a subdivision now. The only difference is it cannot be a charp pit as it is. Houses could be built on that property. There would have to be a lot of dirt work moved around to make level things for property, for the houses. But as it's zoned, there could be houses there, a subdivision already. So, the main purpose of this rezoning is to make it a charp pit. And I am fully 100% against that. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak in opposition on this one, on Arnold Road? Yes, ma'am, please come up and state your name.
Hi, my name is Carrie Beeler. I own 16 acres adjacent to this property, a farm. I just moved my, my two college-age children from East Brainerd to get out of the hustle and bustle of the traffic. I still work downtown Chattanooga. I love this area. You know, I would like to see it stay rural. Arnold Road is a problem. There's a lot of traffic. I would just like, I'm, I'm confused about a lot of things, really. So, a charp mine, a charp pit, I don't know what that is. I'm a little confused why it would be changed from residential to agricultural, and then you can put a subdivision on it? And how many homes are there planned on that property? And is the same construction company, the same people that own the adjacent subdivision, that would be adjacent to the property? So, I'm not, I'm a little confused about the zoning, really. And, but mainly, I just don't want to see any subdivisions in the area. I moved here to be in a farm in a rural area, and that's what I would like to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? Okay, hearing no one else. Is anyone speaking in favor of this? Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Bob Hammond. I represent Mr. Houston. James Houston, who owns BLH Enterprises, who owns the property. And I'll kind of need y'all to guide me as to how to proceed. I mean, I'm not in court. I mean, I know how I do things in court. Should I, can I ask him questions? Get him up here?
Yeah, floor is yours.
Lead him, or, okay.
Floor is yours.
All right, my name is...
These are the plans that they didn't want to look at. We, they say offered them to them, and they didn't want to see them. What's this other guy? Documents, signatures from, you'll recognize some of those names from people who are, do that kind of work. Just a minute. It's pretty thing, a man who's been being able to buy locally.
Oh, you got extra?
Yeah, I got extra.
We got one extra here. This is your original. You might want it back.
Well, you know, y'all have that. I'll just, that original four copies, I thought. And the, the blue outlined area is the, the property on the handout that I gave you earlier. Obviously, nobody wants development near them. Mr. Houston is a developer. He's from, lives in Knoxville. And I'll enter. Can you come up here, Mr. Houston?
My name is James Houston.
You're the owner, and a lot of the...
I'm the owner, developer. What I do is, I've been building houses since 2002. I had my license for GSH Contractors in 2002. I'm building houses now in Cleveland, Tennessee, and my lowest price house is 575,000. I'm building five, five in the ground as we speak now. Now, what I was going to do is land development. We also, let me state this out first. BLH Enterprise is my rental corporation. When I first bought that property a few years ago, I was going to build rental houses there. But then, I decided to build sellable houses there, spec houses. And so, I'm using GSH Contractors. Now, GSH Contractors is my construction company. Okay, I am constructing in Buffett in South Carolina now. Well, we under $2 million contract to clear off land and to get it developed. And they are putting houses there in Buffett, South Carolina. Also, we clearing off land in Meridian, in Udoa, Tennessee, on Meridian Drive. We clearing off land for some commercial buildings that are going to put there. Also, we clearing off land on Highway 58 in Harrison, Tennessee, where they're going to put stories, stories places. We're doing it now as we speak. I have men doing that. But what we was going to try to do is put reasonable-priced houses in Rock Springs. And the way we was going to do it, we're going to try to, when we moved the land, we're going to try to get rid of the dirt, sell the dirt to keep the cost of the houses down. Now, we understand that it's on R2 now. What we could do now is take all the dirt off the right side and push it, pile it up on the left side, and put houses on the right side. But then, all that pile of dirt on the left house will look crazy. So, we're just going to try to get rid of that dirt and put the houses all over the area. Now, I ain't never sold dirt. I ain't never been a dirt seller. I ain't never sold dirt. But what I was going to do is if I sold this dirt to keep the prices of those houses down, because I know I can't get what I'm building in Cleveland. I can't get the 500,000 for a house here. But I can figure keep them around 200,000, since I'm already backed up to another subdivision. So, I figured we put a subdivision in there, maybe we can sell them by 200. And if y'all agree, let me do it. Well, like I said, right now, if we do, if we moved the dirt off 11 acres, it'd be worse than, we get rid of, a charp pit for two years, and we should be, have houses in there and most of that dirt out of there. We don't need 10 years, and we don't need forever. Like I said, I don't sell dirt. All I need is to get the dirt out the way. And I think if I did sell that dirt, I can cut the cost of development and keep the houses at a reasonable price. That's why we're trying to get the charp pit for a couple of years. So...
Question. So, I, I understand that you're, you're a developer. You build houses.
Yes.
Like you said, you're looking at the, you've got $500,000 houses going on, and these will be around the $200,000 range. Now, how many houses did you, do you have planned for this?
I think we go put about 24 houses in there.
And so, how much, and how much dirt have you calculated as far as money-wise? I'm just curious, basic calculation of, of moving that out, how much is that going to generate?
Well, I really hadn't gained that much.
The reason I, I'm just asking because we're using the comparable of, you know, say, well, if we sell this dirt, you know, it'll make this, make it be less expensive on the houses. But church not real expensive. And so, I mean, I'm just kind of, I'm just wondering...
It just cut down on development.
Okay.
Because we got to go in and whip machines.
You got to move it anyway.
Yeah, got to move it anyway. So, I'm stuck piling it all on 11 acres. I figure we get it out of the way and put houses on both sides. Instead of putting houses on one side, and there'll be dirt pile on the other side. But we got the machines to do that work. That's what we're doing right now.
If you sell it, they'll be paying him. But if he just moves it, he's going to have a big expense in moving dirt.
That's right. That's right.
How, how many cubic yards of dirt are you planning on moving off the site? You got to have a number. You got all these contours on the map.
Uh, I think, what's going to add that number? What's his name?
Casey.
Casey.
Casey. He came up sick. Yeah, I don't know exactly the...
That's a critical thing. I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's 500,000 cubic yards of dirt, that's, that's 50,000, 10,000, you know, leaving that site and going on a road. So, it would be good to know that. I mean, is it 50,000? Is it 500,000? Is it 2 million? I mean, it's, that, that's important. Second question is, is there sewer in this area?
Yes, probably sewer and water. Yeah, sewer and water there.
I, I believe that there is sewer. That, that, any of you that have, that are live in that area that spoke, are you on septic or sewer? Septic?
No, well, it's both. There is sewer.
But there is sewer because I, I own the property actually just right down the road, and I'm on septic. But I'm, but just at the end of the sewer. So, I know there is sewer. I just didn't know if it went around that side.
Because if you're cutting, you know, you, you can't put field lines and cut ground.
Right, right.
So, if you're cutting down 30, 40 feet, that ground is not going to hurt.
No.
But you're saying there's sewer available for 27 houses?
Yes, there's on both sides. I think it's... Yes, there's on both sides. I think it's on, the subdivision backed up to us somewhere, I'd say.
Excuse me, how many acres is there on that property?
22 acres.
22 acres?
Yes.
Have you reached out to the state as far as permitting for the removal?
Yes, yes. Went and permitted, and what they said is, before we could do that, we had to get approved to get to A1 before they would approve to move the dirt.
I think the surface mining unit has been to the property. I mean, Mr. Brown is maybe unfamiliar with that. I don't know, but they've been up here, and they've been talking to, you know...
Did you meet with them out on site, David?
I met with two different ones, the PD. The reason that the mine was not even looked at was because somehow, these past years, somebody had brought in some illegal dumping. And doing about three acres, trying to fill it in a gully. And they got called in to find them. And EPD was probably in, for the school, for the other holders to clean it up. Before the mining, we need to come out and relook at it.
And that's been cleaned up?
Yeah, yes.
Issue well beneath the planning commission. They mentioned that Mr. Steele owned a trailer on the property that owed some taxes, had some back taxes due. And Mr. Houston paid those.
So those have been... Those are paid and done?
Yes, they're paid.
Well, it would be, to me, it's paramount that we know the amount of soil that's leaving that side. Not because of soils leaving, but because that's a tremendous amount of truck traffic and, you know, it's like putting... If you're gonna move out 500,000 yards of dirt in a year and a half, I mean, we're gonna need to go build some roads.
What I say, we're gonna move as much as we can to get the ground...
Well, yeah, you got, you got proposed cut elevations on here, so somewhere there's a comp that tells you how much you gotta come off and get to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's gotta be a comp on it.
Probably sitting in Mr. Campbell's computer.
Was, was there a topo that was flown on, or was it a ground run topo, or do you know?
Mr. Campbell. And also, the distance from the site to the Highway 27 is really short. It's not far at all from, when you go out the driveway, around 2 where Arnold Road is, 27. There's not many residences at all between the two places.
Mr. Campbell was supposed to have been here tonight, and he's sick. Any other questions or the ward?
I'm just throwing this out there, sorry. If we considered it, would y'all be okay with a contingent that you have to come out to the shortest distance to 27? You couldn't go the other way on the road to the building?
If there's a time, I don't know, there's no, per temporary, I don't know if you have any temporary permissions, but, you know, do it for a year and, you know, see what you've done.
Yeah, like I said, I don't sell dirt. I'll build houses.
Yeah, it's ready to go. I've seen his financial statement. He can, he can afford to do what he needs to do. He can put up all the silt fence and, you know, gravel he needs.
Put up a surety bond on the roadway that's going on the county part of the road that goes to the state highway, doing a surety bond, so if there's damage, it will be covered as well?
Yes.
Okay. Y'all have anything else to share?
There's a reclamation bond with the EPD. When it gets to that stage, that he'll have to post, and they don't deal in small numbers, I think.
I don't think we have any further questions. Is that all you wanted to share at this time?
So just to be clear...
I think that pretty well covered. I mean, like I said, you know, nobody wants development around them. But, you know, there's a school right down, like they said, the same thing that is bad is good. There's a school right down the road. It's a good place to have that.
So just to be clear, you're gonna take it from R2 to A1, or you want to take it from R2 to A1? Mind the dirt, however many cubic yards that is, we don't know that yet. And then you want to rezonate back to R2 when the dirt's gone, or R1?
Yeah, R2.
R2, back to R2 and build houses.
Right.
25 houses on 24 acres.
We may put more houses.
20, on 22 acres, I mean. Okay. And you're, and you're positive there's septic?
Yeah.
To handle it.
Sewer, sewer is there.
I'm pretty sure that too, but we have to verify.
Thank you all. Yes, ma'am. Please come to the podium. We'll let you have one more call.
I just want to say that property is a big gully. Half of that property is just a big, huge gully. And the other half is just a big, huge mine pit, where they've gone in there with bulldozers and just taken out all the trees and all, all the dirt already around there. And they have started filling in the gully with trees and burned it and stuff. But it's gonna take a lot of moving dirt to get that. It's just a mud pit that slides down the hill. And before you consider it, you should really go out there and look at that property, because it's, it doesn't look stable to me for home, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that ends our public hearing time, and now we're getting to our informational. So we have Lisa Eubanks for the Cherokee Regional Library System here to speak tonight. Is Miss Lisa?
All right, thank you, guys. We'll talk about something besides zoning. All right, I've got some handouts for you guys. Thank you so much for having me tonight to come and talk about public libraries. I am Lisa Eubanks, the Director of the Cherokee Regional Library System, and we are serving Dade and Walker County. In Walker County, we have three branches, Rossville, Chickamauga, and Lefatte. And we just completed a fiscal year. So what you're looking at is hot off the press, are what we would, you would maybe call an annual report. And we like to call it an impact report, because what we've tried to do is capture the services that we provide to our residents and to the community, and really try to demonstrate the impact that our services have on their lives. So if you don't mind, let me just talk a little bit about what you're looking at. On the bottom, 359, that's how many daily visitors we averaged every day this past year coming into our three Walker County libraries. I know I've heard you guys talk in the past about all the folks that are moving into our community. They're coming from other states. They're moving. They're buying homes. And they stop at the public library to get a public library card, sometimes before they even go to the DMV. They're at the library getting a public library. And we, we hear their stories, and we hear that they, they've checked out our community. They know they've got a very nice public library, and it's part of their decision for moving into the community. And they know that a public library that's well taken care of, the community really speaks well for those that take care of the community and, and support a public library. So we appreciate that. So what are these 359 daily visitors coming into the library to do? There are probably about top five, top five reasons I'd like to talk to you here in the next few minutes. The most obvious one, you're probably thinking of books. Yeah, we do books. We do have, usually on average each day, 665 items are circulated in our three public libraries. And that is print material and electronic. Right now, print is still king in our libraries. We do have more print materials. But last year, we did 25,000 electronic books that were circulated. So that's eBooks that are checked out, or audiobooks that people can download and listen to. So that is increasing every year, and those books are a little more expensive. Another reason people come into our libraries is for our programs. Everyone knows about our story hour. Story hour's been around ever since libraries have been around, and we do a really good job at Ready to Read. But we also have a lot of programs this past year where teens have come into our library. We have some phenomenal teen programming going on in our three libraries, where we've got STEAM and STEM, creative writing classes. We have programming for adults. We have family program where intergenerational folks are coming in. And we have one program in Rossville called I Learned It at the Library. These programs are well attended. About 362 attendees each week across our three libraries come in and attend our programs. It just goes to show you that folks in our community are looking for meaningful educational and engaging activities close to home. I mean, let's face it, gas prices are really outrageous, and they want something to do close to home. Another reason people come into our libraries is for our space. I know many of you have been into our libraries in public meetings, civic organizations. But just the average person can come in and use our space, just carve out a little niche in our, our libraries, or one of our study rooms, or a large meeting room. They might need to come in and conduct a virtual interview for a job, meet with potential clients. Even our large businesses like Roper use our large meeting spaces for hiring fairs, job fairs. Those happen quite often. So that's a really important part of what our public libraries do in Walker County. Internet. You would think nowadays that everybody has the internet on their phones and the data plan, or they have it at home. Well, COVID-19 really showed us that not everybody has internet access at home. Or maybe they do, and the bandwidth is just not enough. They got three students in the home that are always doing homework. There's streaming going on, and they just don't have enough bandwidth. So on average, 81 internet sessions took place in our libraries this past year. And we were also able to take advantage of some federal E-rate funds. And we now have a hotspot and Chromebook borrowing program for our residents that's been really popular. So we can get those hotspots and internet access into their homes. And last but not least, I want to talk about a really great partnership and initiative we just launched this year, and that's the Play Card. We partnered with the Walker County School System and the Chickamauga City Schools to put a public library card in the hands of every student. Parents can opt out of it, but we're finding not many do. And when school starts back next week, every student can come into a public library in their county, give their name, or their lunchroom number, student ID number. We look them up. They have access to check out up to five books at a time, and it's fine free. There's no overdue fines on books if they're late. We're so excited about that. We've already seen kids coming in this summer and using that Play Card. And we hope to have some numbers at the end of the year of how many Walker County students are using our public libraries just by taking that barrier of how hard it is to come in and get a library card, all the paperwork you have to fill out. We removed that barrier, and now they can get it, and we're really super excited to see how that goes this year. Okay, I wanted to keep it brief. I gave you a lot of information. We handed out some of these slurs to the audience. But we have come to you tonight because we do have a request for an increase in your appropriation to the public library. You have that request in your packet. I hope I got it to you in time. And we really do need and want to keep this momentum going that we've got. We've got some really fantastic libraries, and the cost of running them increases, as you know, inflation is going up. And we would really love the ability to keep doing what we're doing and to do a small cost, I mean, a wage adjustment for our staff. It's very important to retain and to be able to recruit employees, too. So that's all I have to say, but I would be happy to answer any of the questions that you might have for me.
Just a comment. I know I have used the Cherokee Regional on multiple occasions, and you and your staff do a wonderful job. It's a great facility. The meeting rooms, study rooms are just impeccable. And it's nice just to hold a book in your hand every now and then.
Yeah, that's still popular.
They do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Okay, next on our agenda tonight, we have Mr. Damon Rains, Superintendent of Walker County Schools. Mr. Rains?
We appreciate the time, and the heat. It lost nine pounds sitting back there, so it's been great so far. I know y'all are sweating it, too. We just wanted to come, and we always appreciate your time and respect that. Chris Jones is with me. Chris is our Facilities and Maintenance Director, and he is kind of the head of our security team. We just wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about what we currently do in the school system to protect our students and our employees. A lot of times that gets lost in translation, and you hear about the situations that we just heard about in Uvalde. And it comes up quickly, and people get real nervous about that. And so we're trying to get that information out. And one of the things that we're gonna do, and I provided you a copy, it's about four pages. It's just some bullets of what we have in place and what we've been doing for probably the past seven years to make sure that our schools are very safe and secure, to protect our students and our employees. But we also have resource officers. We put in what we called school safety officers a couple of years in coordination with the Sheriff's Department and the City of Lafayette. I've got a little proposal I want to throw out to you. You guys have heard a little bit about what Coteau's County is doing with the school system there and putting an SSO or an SRO in every building. We don't necessarily feel like that's appropriate, because I'm not sure what they would do for eight hours in an elementary school. But we, we've got a program in place now to where we have active coverage in all of our buildings throughout the course of the day. And it keeps people guessing when they see a car there or not there. They're not sure when they're gonna be there. We feel like that's a safety mechanism as well. But there's several things that we've done, and I wanted Chris just to kind of hit some of the highlights so that you guys could know, and as you're talking to constituents, you can be sharing with them some of the things that the school systems are doing to make sure that we have a safe place for our students.
Thank you. We have a state board policy. We have a full-blown emergency plan. Each school has that. They have to return to me, update it every year, return to me. A copy's kept with Mr. Rains, with me. Sheriff's Department, Police Department, they all have access to that. A lot of things we do, we have, all visitors have one, one access into the building, one point of access. They have to be verified to come into our buildings. Once school starts, all of our doors are locked. We asked that all of our classroom doors stay locked at all times. And going through, we have a crisis incident management system that is tied into 911. So we have an emergency, and a need arises, they are notified immediately. All of our cameras pop up on their screen at 911. They're communicating with law enforcement as they're making their way to the, to the scene. We conduct fire drills, severe weather drills. We conduct four intruder drills a year, usually two in the fall, two in the spring, just for practice so we can train to react and keep going with what, what needs to be done in case we have that emergency. We do a lot of things through the year. All of our cameras, we have cameras on every door with the incident management system. So any, any door we have in any building, a camera will catch whoever, if somebody's trying to come in. And then that's the basic part of it. Do you have any questions?
So I think I have another answer, but how many resource officers do we have in the school?
We have...
Well, I was just gonna say, we have two resource officers. We have one at each high school. One works for the Sheriff's Department, one works for the City of Lafayette. So they cover the high school. And then we have three school safety officers that cover the entire area. Two of the Sheriff's Departments and one City of Lafayette officer that does the city system, the city schools. They do, and they're, they're there for several hours, and they have a schedule that they work out amongst themselves. And that way, they're not in the same place every day. They're in different places. And then we also have the, I started to say dare, that's what I grew up with, the champs officers that hit the elementary schools in fifth grade. And the sheriff graciously provides that for us as well. So we've got five basically that we fund. We fund them at about $250,000 in our budget, and that goes to the Sheriff's Department and the City of Lafayette. And then I have a proposal tonight I just want you guys to be thinking about that would add some additional security officers. Again, the problem is finding the officers right now, and I think the Officer Stanfield's here with us tonight. He's been briefed by the sheriff about this as well. So that is something we would have to consider, is just finding those folks and being able to put them into place. One of the things that we did probably four years ago, pre-COVID, is we feed officers, if they come by, breakfast or lunch, or both. We have some that do eat both. But we, we want them to come in our buildings for two reasons. One, we want them to develop relationships with our students. And two, we want them to be a presence in our buildings, and that sends the right message to our community when they drive by and they see an officer there. So we've been doing that for several years now as well. That seems to attract them in. We want to continue doing that as well. But the things that we've put into place, like one of the things at the elementary schools, when a teacher goes out to recess, typically what will happen is they'll prop that door so they can come right back in from recess. Well, we have a card swap now on those doors. So those doors close and are secure. And then there's a part of the safety plan, if something happens in the building while they're outside, they know exactly what to do, and they wouldn't come back in the building. But they have a swipe to get in, so instead of propping that door open, and if you noticed the, the video from Uvalde, the teacher went out, the door was propped. When she went back in, it didn't close all the way, and that's how the intruder got in. So we're constantly drilling and practicing with our teachers and our staff members to let them know. We try not to let you know everything for obvious reasons. But immediately, if we push a button in our building and we have an emergency, it goes directly to 911. And we're seeing response times in the minutes, one to two minutes, because we have an agreement with all of our agencies that it doesn't matter whoever gets the call, they respond immediately to a school to make sure. And we had a situation a couple of years ago where a fourth grader had a cell phone, and he called 911. No one knew, because he was on the playground, and we probably had 30-plus officers show up. It was a scary situation for that little fellow at the end of the day. But it proved that they, they are going to respond and react quickly, especially to a school situation, just based on what we... just based on what we've lived through in schools. And I pray every day that that never, ever happened to a school here in Walker County or anywhere around us, because that's a tragic event. The proposal I wanted you guys to look at and consider is we are looking at adding four additional security officers. Now, it's not SRO, SRO has to go through a specific training, and it happens during the summer, and it's quite expensive. So the SSOs don't necessarily go through that, but they're still members of either the Sheriff's Department or the city of Lafayette. And I will tell you now, for full disclosure, I have not had this conversation with the city of Lafayette at this point, but I will, I really just wanted to see what your thoughts were on it. And again, I'm not asking for an answer tonight. But that would be four positions at approximately $200,000, that's what those cost, it's about $50,000 in officers, the cost with benefits. Walker County Sheriff's Office would provide three, and the city of Lafayette would provide one additional officer. And then we would share that cost at a two-thirds, one-third. So the school system would fund $133,000 for round numbers, and the county would fund $67,000, that third that they would share with us. And that would provide nine safety officers, two SROs and seven SSOs in our buildings on a schedule to where no one would know, other than the two high schools, who was going to be in that building and at what time at any day of the week during our 180 days of school. And so I just wanted to bring that to you guys for your thoughts and consideration to assist us as we're providing enhanced security in our buildings on top of what we're already doing. And we feel very comfortable and confident that we have a good system in place that keeps people from coming into our buildings without us letting them in. But, you know, people are out there trying to figure a way around that as well, and so the presence of officers definitely is a continual deterrent from that happening in the future. So really wanted you guys just to know that we've got a lot of things in place, feel free to reach out to Chris or I about what we're doing, we'd be happy to explain more in detail to you, kind of off the record if we needed to. But also share that with the folks you're running into, because I know that's a concern from our parents and the folks that we serve, and we want to make sure that they feel comfortable sending their children to school, that's their prized possession, and we want to take care of that as well. But if you would consider looking at your budget, and if you feel like that you could help us with that third, to add those four additional officers, we would definitely appreciate it. I'd be happy to send Chairman Whitfield something a little more in detail, the breakdown, and then I'll also begin having that conversation with the city of Lafayette to see if that's an interest on their part as well. I didn't want to speak for them, since I haven't talked to them at this point. Be happy to entertain any questions or answer anything that you have, just didn't want to take a lot of your time tonight.
I have just one quick question. So if a visitor shows up to any of our schools, can they access the front door, walk in, or do they have to be buzzed in?
We have what's called an Aphone system. They hit the button on the front, and it automatically starts recording video, and then it buzzes to front office. If they know them, it's apparent, they get to know people, get to know parents, they'll let them in. If they don't, they make them show ID and state their purpose. Then they're either let in or administrator comes to the door if we're not sure.
If it's an itinerary teacher that travels, they have to have their badge on, and they have to show their badge to get in as well. Yes, sir.
You got that in all fifth grade schools, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Okay, thanks for being here tonight, speaking. Okay, the next item on our agenda was a Resolution R. 31-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to declare, did I miss something? I am so sorry, I did miss that. Okay, public comment, I missed that, sorry about that. Anyone here that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward, and give you up to five minutes to speak, and please state your name.
Janice Williams, I understand you may have a part in our conversation. The first thing that I want to address is transparency, transparency, transparency. I am spent, I'm exhausted. We work very hard in this community, a lot of citizens to do, to help with the very things that you continuously publicly say our county needs help with. Your citizens are helping with that. And the, for lack of a better word, and I mean no disrespect, I'm stating the facts, the lies that you have said on TV, that when we, it took almost two years to get a meeting with you, every piece of your documentation was provided to show that that was not true, and you still won't correct the record with it. You said we would never have a full-time county attorney, we're paying $90,000 now, we all are, for a county attorney. When I have reached out to the county attorney, who I would think would be objective and stick to the facts and the truth, I am scolded with the same nonsensical fibs that have started with you, Shannon. Now, there are a group of citizens who, when you say we need spay and neuter in this county, everybody's stepping up. Hundreds and hundreds of citizens are being educated, they're stepping up to spay and neuter their pets. Citizens formed a nonprofit just in our county to help our low-income citizens and our senior citizens. Your shelter will not take a call from any of us or return a call, nor will you. They will not tell the citizens in our county that there is something available for the low-income and senior citizens in our county. They refuse to say it. They will refer everybody out of our county. We have begged, we have pleaded, we get no response. If I call, I don't get a returned call. When we take up to 40 animals, we do it in a van and a second driver. When we have a 100-pound dog and 80-pound dog and a 60-pound dog, that takes up most of the van, we have no room for the smaller animals. I have been trying for almost a full year now to just get somebody in the shelter to take my call, because you say that the shelter has a spay and neuter program. If they could help twice a month with a total of six dogs, big dogs, we could take 80 animals instead of being booked out several months in advance and help the population of Walker County. This is, everybody's doing what you're asking them to do, Shannon, but the passive-aggressive nonsense and the gossip and the ugly personal comments made from your employees, you have never addressed why an employee called us F-ing Bs, why you said we were going to be arrested if we didn't get off a shelter property. You've never, even through four-year requests, there's never been an answer to that question. Nothing was done. We had two children with us, there was no issue made until the employee came out and spoke with us that way. The same employees worked at our shelter when our shelter was shut down by the Department of Agriculture with five pages, five pages of violations, including inhumane treatment of animals. There were parvo puppies running loose, feces and urine everywhere, you couldn't walk, I was there that day, you couldn't walk in without your hands cupped over your mouth because of the flies. And instead of telling the public, we've had a crisis, there was an error, you took Joe Leggie out to do a photo op saying you were refurbishing the shelter, and you never told the public what actually happened. And three months later, when they were, when you were finally up to code, that's when the report was released, and you didn't address that with the public. But the reason I'm bringing that up is, the same employees are still there that let our shelter get into that situation. You refuse training, the training has been free. You are five years now into this, and you refuse training. You refuse training for animal control. Our district attorney worked with the state prosecutor and the DEA and hosted it here in our county, but nobody from our animal control attended. It was free, it's been available online ever since then, nobody has taken it. But you want the taxpayers to now up it to almost a million dollars for our animal care in our county, when you won't get free training for the employees to be able to properly do their job. And I would like transparency from this day forward. It's not a game, we don't work for you, we pay you $130,000 a year to serve us.
Thank you for being here tonight, great to see you again.
Will you be transparent with us?
Your time is up, it's time to sit down.
Will you be transparent with us?
It's time for you to sit down.
I'm going to sit down, I'm asking you a question.
Your time is up, Ms. Janice, thank you for being here tonight. Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, you're next. Please state your name if you would.
Yes, hi, thank you for allowing me to speak, my name is Megan Watson, and I was just coming to talk about some voluntary benefits. You know, I met with you about eight weeks ago, it took a while to get a meeting, I understand you're super busy, I thought this would be, and there's a lot of stuff that's probably more important than this to you guys, but I thought this would be a good time to just kind of address it and see if we could get some resolution. So just to kind of inform the rest of the Board of Commissioners, I had worked with Dana Johnson on offering some additional voluntary benefits that would be at no cost to the county and 100% refundable. She was super excited about rolling that out, we had started getting, going through the motions to do that, and so then, you know, she's no longer with you guys, and so I reached out to you, and it took a while to get a meeting, and then, you know, it was like, give me a couple of weeks, and I followed up every week, and then I just can't leave a voicemail, because it's like full, so I just wanted to go about it in the right way. But my reputation's starting to be on the line, because I've had people that have reached out, and now they're thinking that I haven't followed up. So I was hoping to just kind of come and see if maybe we could just kind of get the show on the road if everybody was good with that. So that's really all I have. If I have any questions from you guys, I'm happy to answer anything that you have or give you additional information that you need.
What would be some, one or two examples of a voluntary benefit? What would be?
So it's supplemental benefits, essentially, similar to an AFLAC program. The biggest difference is it's refundable and it doesn't go through payroll, so it's no administrative cost to you guys. I work with a lot of the city employees at city of Lafayette, I work with all of Chautauqua County, and so just, you know, we're close in proximity to all those things, so I had some interest here and wanted to...
Sort of like a cancer policy?
Yeah, we do different life insurance policies, I know you guys have some supplementary benefits, but we offer some different things and different options, so just getting that out there and educating the public is what we're trying to do. That was it. Anything else?
What do we need to do about, how would we go about that if we wanted to get this information out to the employees and let them make their decisions on if they...
Well, it'd be part of our annual review process on our employee benefit packet that goes out in November.
But I'm just asking to clarify, so this supplemental doesn't have anything to do with ours, it's just a program that they're offering independently of, so why would we wait till November? I'm just saying, the information, if I'm understanding correctly, it's just an optional voluntary thing?
Yeah, typically I just get department heads, and then I reach out to them specifically and see, what's a good time to talk to your team? I show it to people, educate them on what's available. If they want it, that's their personal preference, if not, then that's fine, too. But that way they're educated on everything that's available to them, because we don't really have to work on an open enrollment like most companies, because it's not payroll deduct.
Yeah, it just seems like maybe if we did it at the same time, there could be some confusion with employees thinking that it might be part of a benefit or something like that. I just was curious to how we might could get it out, you know?
Yeah, we want the employees on an annual basis to look at what their investment is into their healthcare and what their prorata share is, and be able to compare their benefit options, so they could compare the cost of this, compare the cost of the AFLAC program that's in place, because those would be competing programs, one may benefit the other one. So the employees really need to look at those in concert at the same time.
Okay, so we could schedule, we could have that, and that's in first November, when opening enrollment? So we could have her set up to come and get involved on that and put that information out at that time?
Is that done at the civic center, Janice?
We usually do the civic center and the library for those down here on the south end of the county, as large as our Sheriff's Department and all that, it's just more convenience. We break it up into a couple of things.
Is it possible she could work something out with you about coming and setting up and showing her program?
Yeah, and I work with AFLAC and Colonial and other places, so I'm good at like helping compare, so yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you for the information, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else tonight? Yes, sir, come up, please. Okay, Mr. Pope, you have the floor.
I'm trying to get my stopwatch started.
My stopwatch is running, so...
Okay, here we go. Now, I'm concerned about this county manager y'all came up with. It hit me by total surprise when I heard about it, so I'm just still trying to find out where each one of you stand. Now, Robert Blakemore, I've got some questions for you. I assume you're very familiar with a law that pertains to the board, right? Establishing the board form of government. And you're, you are familiar with Section 11, I guess. Yeah. Okay, Section 11 gives you governing authority and 18 points here. But also, before it gives you that authority, it says, "Except as otherwise provided in this act." Now, if we go back to Section 10, it is given the chairperson's duties. The first sentence says, "The chairperson shall minister the affairs and day-to-day business of the county." My question to you is, do you believe you, the board here, has the governing authority to overrule what's in Section 10?
So I'll just be very blunt and honest with you, we were elected to do a job. There is a Georgia, Georgia law set by the legislature that says if the chairman does not work with us and help us do our job, we can appoint a county manager and give the county manager the jobs and authority that the board says they should. So yes, by Georgia law, we can change that.
What's the law you're talking about? Are you talking about 36-5-22?
Yes. No, let the attorney come up.
Okay, but what that says, it's the governing authority. Now, this Section 11 over here gives you governing authority, but is it limited governing authority due to the exception clause?
We are the governing authority of Walker County.
Unlimited? Or limited?
There is a Georgia law that says we can appoint a county manager.
Okay, let me give you this example. The Supreme Court recently overruled the EPA on a big deal. The EPA was trying to claim they had governing authority, but the court said, no, you got limited authority. You got authority, but you have exceeded your authority. Now, that's my contention here, that you do have authority, but if you, but it isn't limited with this exception clause. Now, by this Georgia law, it says the governing authority. If you, if, if this law here prevents you from overruling the chairperson, then is it not limited?
Sir, I'm not an attorney, we had the best attorney in county and government law come and present it to the board and to the citizens of Walker County, and I'm going off on what, he said.
Yeah, well, I do want to eventually get into that, but not tonight, because I know you paid him $1,600 to come over here that night and talk with us. Anyway, that's getting into spending county money, which I want to eventually get into.
You've got about 15 seconds, Mr. Pope.
Okay, we'll just say we'll close this hour until next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Okay, anyone else that'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Laura Alsley, and I just have a couple more questions on the pension plan. And I do have copies of what you all provided to participants and the public, if you would like that for reference. But what you all got quotes on was an account balance of basically $6,426,855. So what my question is, is you had mentioned that there's a $200,000 savings, I may not have all the data here, because I just have what the public has. Where is the savings? Because I did not find that, can you break that down?
Yeah, I provided the information. I had one of our ladies in the office reach out. We could schedule a meeting because we were having a meeting of our Board of Trustees, and we wanted to invite you to our meeting.
Okay. Well, I had called back, and that was about three weeks ago, and I haven't heard back. So that's why, that's why I'm here.
Because she was trying to schedule the meeting for you to come in to meet with us.
And I, I-
Because I figured, once I found out you work for Wells Fargo Financial-
I do not work for Wells Fargo Financial. I own my own company, and we do not custody with them, though. But that aside, do you have those numbers, 200,000?
Yeah, we've got that all on a spreadsheet. Would love to sit down and go over it. I don't have it with me.
Okay. Well, I have the information that you all provided. I want to go ahead and go over that real quick. What I'm seeing, the total cost that our current plan is, is $142,971.17. So the savings, it looks like, because ACCG gave you all a cost of $50,152, it looks like the savings is actually 92,000. Of course, you know, we are ramping up risk too. So, you know, this is a huge difference in what, you know, I understood, because I heard it from several people too.
Well, it wasn't only the administrative cost, but the cost of the funds as well.
So no, this is talking about your current plan. This is the fixed account.
Exactly.
The other per-
It's the cost associated with that fixed account.
So the, the cost is asset charge of 1.68, okay? The buck account, funding benefit calculation, 32,000, and then 3,000 for state disclosure filing assistance. The 1.68, based off of that number that you all provided, comes up to 107,000 some odd dollars. Adding those two other figures comes up to the 142,971.17 that they put in this information here.
Okay, did you add in the buck charges that go away?
That it, yes. Those are added in, 32,000 and then 3,000. So, so there is a difference, about 53% as far as savings. There could be additional, but I don't know that. That's what you all provided, the participants here. I also wanted to address the losses. So if, you know, I had asked you all to go back and ask representatives based on 630 values what the losses could potentially be in that equity portfolio, 75% in equities and 25% in fixed income. So I just did an easy number. Let's say there was a loss of 10% in this proposed ACCG plan, then we're looking at basically 642,685, right? Well, that's not taking into account the 7% required investment return that they have put in there as well. Also, it doesn't take into account the cost, which is estimated at 50,000. So that's going to put us well above the 700, 700,000. So we've got the library that could use resources, Walker County Schools. The Wall Street Journal has an article here, and they actually say in this article, the first page says, "Pension Fund Plans, or Pension Funds Make Riskier Bets." Then they say, "When public pension funds invest return, investment returns fall short, governments are primarily responsible for taking up the slack, pressuring them to fund money by cutting other spending or by raising revenue from steps such as raising taxes." And that's why I'm here today. I'm trying to avoid these sort of things here. So that's what I wanted to talk about. Also, are these funds going into ACCG commingled within a trust along with other defined benefit plans?
Well, that's why we wanted you to come in. We'll show you.
Do you know that, though? Can you, it's yes or no? Do you know it?
I don't personally know all the-
You should know what you're pitching to your people. That's what the thing is.
We would love for you to come sit down with us, since you're also a financial advisor. We'd love for you to come talk to us.
I, I, I just want an answer, that's all.
Well, your time is up, but we appreciate you coming. We look forward to you coming and meeting with the trustees.
So you will, I suppose you'll call me back?
Yeah, we reached out to you, asking-
And I called you, I did call you back, and I haven't heard back from you within three weeks. I gave some doc-
I didn't know you tried calling me back.
I, I did. I talked, I talked to your-
The reply that I got was that you told our lady at the front desk that you'd said everything that you wanted to say.
No, that's not true. What I said is, I, yes, I do have a couple more questions. And I said, "We can either talk by phone if he needs it quickly next week," which was two weeks ago, "or we could make, meet face-to-face the first week of August." She said she would get back with you, and then you-
She did relay to me that you said you couldn't meet for three weeks.
Well, that's a little different than what you actually said.
Yeah, she sent it to me in email. I'll show it to you.
Okay, well, that's different from what you said. But I did not receive a call back. I can't make appointments the same week that I say that I'm available. I purposely said we can meet face-to-face August, the first week of August, thinking that would give you enough time. It also gives me enough time because I have other, you know, obligations, just like any of us.
Thank you.
Thank you for your diligence.
Anyone else that'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name's John Johnson, and, you know, I know we have problems with our animal shelter from people talking all the time. My concern, of course, is, I, I know Mr. Stoltz, he, he's been in the medical field. I, I was in surgery for 42 years, been retired now for about six. We always had to have in-service continuing education, have to, you know, keep that up if you keep your license current. So I, I, I understand, you know, there might, should be some continuing education kind of clauses for any kind of individuals that, that have licensure by either the county or by the state. They should be able to stay up to date as to what, what's necessary, because there's changes all the time. You know, that is, medical field changes constantly. So that's, that was one of my concerns. And I'll just get off the, the animal shelter part. I've been to the Ag Center, and it's a very good thing to have the, the market come there, and I thought it was very good. Of course, my wife and I were there, and Chris, you know, hey, it's been hot. And we were there on a Saturday morning. And so even at that, it was, you know, fairly hot during that time. I was wondering if, if, you know, it's a pretty high area covered, you could probably get some of these huge fans. It wouldn't probably take but two of them, I would think. Probably kind of one on, just down the center of it, one sort of on each end. I don't know cost or anything like that, but I would figure, we have people in the county that can do that kind of work and, and kind of pay just by their particular jobs that they do. Now, the other, that was, I just have three kind of comments here. I don't know if there's a person that is in charge of the Ag Center and the Civic Center and all this kind of thing. I don't know that.
There is.
There is? Okay.
Over that entire campus.
Okay, covers the entire campus. So, so they would, actually, they're kind of in charge of getting different people to come in for different activities. So they, they work with the farmer's market directly?
Yeah, every week, McKenzie, who heads up the farmer's market, coordinates with them every, every week that they have the farmer's market.
Okay.
So she's there on site. Her name's Sarah.
Okay.
And she manages the space.
The space, okay.
For anybody that wants to use any of the spaces.
Okay, well, that's good. That, that was one thing. I didn't know if there was anybody, you know, actually in charge of that, besides just the farmers just coming to set up their-
No, it's a full-time position. She's there 40 hours a week.
Okay.
Monday through Friday.
I know Frolowthorp just started their farmer's market on Sundays, and, and of course, they have a person that's, they're doing something different because that person's actually not just over that particular thing, but over citywide activities, I think. So, you know, that's a, that's a paid individual. So we do have a paid individual that's-
That manages the overall campus.
Okay, well, good.
But they're not there on Saturdays with the farmer's market?
She's there some on Saturdays if need be. I've seen her-
But we do have somebody that's in charge of, of maybe getting the people there.
Scheduling events.
Scheduling the events.
Rentals.
And then somebody's there scheduling which farmers come or-
No, no, McKenzie that heads up the farmer's market, she runs her event on Wednesdays and Saturdays.
Okay, okay. Well, that's good. All right, well, good. That's all I had, so I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, anyone else tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our agenda. Okay, back to our resolution here. Resolution R. 31-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to declare property of the Walker County Sheriff's Office unserviceable surplus and remove from the county inventory. Whereas OCGA 36-9-2 provides that the county governing authority shall have the control of all property belonging to the county and made by order enter on its minutes direct disposal of any real property which may lawfully be disposed of and make and execute good and sufficient title thereof on behalf of the county. And whereas the sheriff has requested that property listed in Exhibit A and Exhibit B be deemed unserviceable surplus, and further requests that the property be removed from the county inventory. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the property listed in Exhibit A and B attached here too may part hereof be hereby declared unserviceable surplus and removed from the county inventory. So resolved and adopted the 28th day of July 2022. So there is an attached memo that the sheriff has sent over. Exhibit A has some, some radios and cameras and tasers. And Exhibit B lists out five, five older vehicles, a 2007 Chevrolet Impala with a bad engine, a 2009 Chevrolet Impala that's been wrecked, a 2010 Chevrolet Impala with a bad engine, a 2013 Chevrolet Impala that's been wrecked, and a 2014 Chevrolet Impala that has been wrecked. So do we have a motion to the board to approve this resolution being a recommendation from the sheriff?
I've got a question first. So what do we do with this equipment?
That goes into the auction.
The, the vehicles do. The, the other equipment, the tasers, the cameras?
I think most times they're doing that on gov deals, on the smaller items, I believe.
Yeah.
I think they take that and put it on gov deals, and then the vehicles go into the-
Okay, I was just curious. I was just curious.
But the vehicles are not going on gov deals, right?
No.
Because we just sold three Grados on there. We practically give them away, so I would not recommend any vehicles going on there.
Larry's working on pulling all the rest inventory together to have one this year.
Yes, we practically give them away, so I don't recommend any more vehicles.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Yes, sir.
A motion by Commissioner Hart, second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. Okay, Resolution R. 32-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a code official in a construction, for construction codes and a code official for property maintenance. Whereas the Board of Commissioners Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. Whereas Chapter 8 of the Code of Walker County calls for the code official to enforce the provisions of the construction code. And whereas Chapter 20 of the Code of Walker County calls for the code official to enforce the provisions of the International Property Maintenance Code. Whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointments to serve effective immediately. Our employee, John Persley, is the code official over construction code. And then employee David Brown is the code official over property maintenance code. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointments of John Persley and David Brown are approved. So resolved and adopted the 28th day of July 2022. So I'll submit this in the form of a motion to have these two people fill these two internal roles for our county operation to be in compliance with our code ordinances. Any questions?
Just to clarify, we had talked earlier on that, and in the terminology, really, it's a building official and a code official as per the ordinance, the, the actual international code council, ICC ordinances that we actually enforce that were adopted by DCA. I know that we've worded it this way, I think, to match our municipal, but, so it's our building official and code official. For anybody that's unfamiliar, that'd be you. So just wanted to clarify that because, because the verbiage is a little different than what, what we actually work under.
Good point. Second. All right, we have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. Okay, we have some purchase orders. This is purchase order number 2022-1840, multiple emergency services for $34,985 for extrication equipment for the Walker County Fire and Rescue Department. So this would be funded out of the American Rescue. Our chief, Blake Hodges here. If you'd like to come up and give us an overview on what he's looking to invest in.
Good evening.
Evening, gentlemen.
Okay, this, this first one for the extrication equipment for the $34,985 funded out of the American Rescue Plan. It's part of our, we call it our replacement program. However, we're using, we have, we have 10 sets. Eight of those are over 20 years old. They're still serviceable, but they're going out. We lose pieces of them here or there. We're actually not replacing a set, sending it to surplus. We'll be putting it at a volunteer station or moving what we can and then use it as spare, as spare. But this is, this is a purchase we've been, we started last year that we'll be doing every, hopefully we'll be doing every year. The, both this one and the next one's with municipal emergency services. They are the sole proprietor for the brand. So they're the only one in our region we can purchase from. So there's not additional quotes that we look at for these, these items. So this is the, this is, this was their, their price. And we're going with, we're going with this battery-operated, this third-generation, state-of-the-art. There's, there's no doubt that what we're purchasing now is, it's quick and easy to access off the units versus hooking up hydraulics. And, and the firefighters come off the units, go straight to work. So I appreciate your consideration in this, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Chief of the older units, do they have to be hooked up to the hydraulics?
That's correct. They have to have a pump, hydraulic hose. Can you, can you surplus those out? We're not going, we're going to utilize what we have to, as backup.
Right.
We do have, well before me, there's probably about 10 or 12 old pumps that, they're just too small to operate anything that we really have. They, they bought some old, the equipment's gone, the tools are gone.
Right.
So we are going to, we are surplusing those old pumps.
Got you. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion to approve the purchase order 2022-1840 in the amount of $34,985 to Municipal Emergency Services.
Motion approved.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
How second?
Second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved. Okay, while we have the chief up, the next one is also his as well. The approval purchase order 2022-1850, also from Multiple Emergency Services, or Municipal Emergency Services in the amount of $49,002 for breathing equipment for the Walker County Fire and Rescue Department. So if you want to give us the details on these supplies or equipment.
So this is, again, this is a part of our replacement program. We have 170-plus self-contained breathing apparatus, which is the harness, we consider the harness, the full pack harness and the cylinder. So what we're doing is, every year, we're trying to purchase at least six-plus harnesses, which I mentioned before in the, in previous meeting that I was asked. The harnesses never go out of service as long as, as long as they pass inspection and pass the test, which is done, performed on them every year. And we use our old ones to part, as parts for when we have things that go wrong with them, we'll, we'll fix them and keep them in service. So a lot of these are, again, are 15, 20 years old. They're wearing out. As far as the cylinders, we have over 250 cylinders. They do expire, most of ours, about 80% expire after a 15-year period. So this is just part of a replacement plan. We're not trying to purchase everything at once. We're just trying to do a little bit each year. So some will roll off and new will roll on.
Okay, so this purchase request is also out of the ARPA funds for six harnesses and 12 of the cylinders to Municipal Emergency Services in the amount of $49,002. Any further questions of the board? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, the next item we have is purchase order 2022-1909. This is for some thermal imaging cameras. David Brown, can you speak on these, please? This is part of our funding that we're using for our rebate that we got.
I've got a question about that before we go any further. Why would we not be using American Rescue for that as well and using our refund for some of the things that need to be for safety issues out in the field for all the other departments?
Well, this is some of the things that was on the safety committee's list.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure, I just noticed the difference in the funding and I just wanted to understand why.
Yeah.
Well, this is Becky and I had gotten with Pat Cook, the training officer with Walker County Sheriff's Department, and we found out that some of their imagers that they have are 20 years plus old. And they have been borrowing some imagers from the fire department, which are completely different, but they did let them use them in case of emergencies. So this with the PTM 466, the PTM 166, that will give them a total of 12 new imagers for their night shifts, their supervisors, drug, not drug task force.
SWAT team.
SWAT team and all, they give them all new equipment. And then you've got two of your K-2 and two of your K-33, that will be going to the fire department to put on more of their trucks with the ones they've already got.
Again, this is being funded out of our grant funding that we got from ACCG from safety, and this has been reviewed by the safety committee. This is their recommendation. Okay?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakenmore to approve purchase order 2022-1909 in the amount of $56,345.99. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Okay, we had our next purchase order, which was an amendment to the budget. This is purchase order number 2022-1953. As y'all well know, it's very difficult, challenging to get vehicles. Our reassessors office had expressed to us during our budget process last year of needing a couple of vehicle replacements, hopefully each year. And so we reached out to our government Ford contractor. You can see he put this into their system in March 24th of this year, and he got a reply back, or response back in their production schedule, and you see down at the bottom, this was for Walker County down there. And so we've been waiting this long just to get them in production queue. So we were needing to go ahead since it looked like those were going to get manufactured this year and be 2022 models. They were requesting to secure this because they've got other people interested in these that we don't want them. So we wanted to get this purchase order on the agenda so we can approve these and hold these, you know, coming to Walker County for our reassessors office. So this was put into our budget for vehicle replacement out of our general fund, and these are all-wheel drives as well, because our reassessors office go gravel drives, up hills and things, and it keeps them from having to determine whether they need to be in four-wheel drive, two-wheel drive. And the all-wheel drives that they use now seem to work well for their service. So these are $26,702.80 each. We'd be purchasing two of these in the amount of $53,405.60 to be paid out of the general fund. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve this purchase order?
Mr. Brandon.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this purchase order is approved. Okay, the next item that we have is our annual transit grant that we get. Most years, the grant includes replacement of buses as well as operational. This year, they don't have any bus availability, so this is just for operational only. You can see that we got this letter by email on July the 13th, 2022 of this year, but the grant cycle for this, I believe, is on the state's fiscal year, which is July 1st. But this is a 50-50 operational grant that's been in place for many years, and so the federal government funds on a 5311 rural assistance program, 50% operational funds in the amount of $328,119 with a local match of 50%, which is also $328,119. And so this is our annual agreement to keep our transit going. The terms, conditions, operation of all this is the same as it has been for probably a couple of decades, to my knowledge. So we just need approval. As you can see, this is a docu-signed document, so I won't be signing this here today because this needs to be done online. And then once we sign it online, because there has to be two other additional signatures from our office, as witness and the clerk and all, and then we'll put the executed copy into the final agenda for the minute records. So do we have a motion to approve the annual transit contract?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakenmore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion at the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the transit grant is approved. Just trying to make sure I get all my papers here. Okay, the next item that we have on our agenda is an appeal for a variance request that was denied by the planning commission back on April 21st, 2022. This is for Mr. Craig DeVos.
DeVos.
DeVos, okay, thank you. For property located at 527, how do they say that one?
Antigous.
Antigous, okay. Dream Drive Lookout Mount Tax Mount impartial 0-006-21. So Mr. Womack, would you like to come up representing your client?
I have been with you tonight, and this Tracy Beaman, who's the court reporter, and I promise you, I will try to make this quick because I know y'all are tired. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard on this appeal, and I know that looking at your agenda and the attachments there too, that you have several of these exhibits, but I've made a copy. I have the original to perfect the record, and I'd like to introduce them to the Board of Commissioners. I've got the original of Mr. Chairman of the Use, and I've got a copy for each one of the Commissioners. And then I also have a copy for the county attorney, will be as if not. If you could do that to him, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
That's exhibit number one, and exhibit number one has to do, notice that we serve upon the chairman for the...
I got two of them drawn up. Can you get that back or not?
Okay, yeah, that is probably correct. So the second one is just a two-page document, it's called collective exhibit two, and what it is, is that it's a tax mount, or tax mounts showing the property of my client. Exhibit number three is the brief and the argument that we put forth in our appeal to the Board of Commissioners. And then exhibit number four is an affidavit by my client setting forth, under oath, certain facts and conditions of the subject property, which is a private, which abuts on a private drive. Now, I will try to be as brief as possible and still cover the issues that we think are important, while we think the planning commission denial of the variance should be granted. Most of our argument is set forth in our brief, but I would just like to point out a few things to the board for your consideration. Basically, what happened was on the 21st of April of this year, the Walker County Planning Commission denied the application for the variance. And the variance was to add another lot to a private drive, which already has five houses and one lot that abuts to the private drive. When the property was being surveyed to call out a piece of property for my client's daughter, who is sitting next to him, who lives on this 32-acre track is the one we're talking about, and she lives in a little cabin that her dad built about 20 years ago, the surveyor just mentioned, "You might want to check with the planning commission to be sure everything's okay." So he did, and he was told, "No, you can't do this because it would be more than six lots, parcels, tracks." It talks about residences, tracks, parcels interchangeably, and you can't, you can't do that. And they pointed him to a section of the county code, which is Section 22-401. And so under 3A of that, that section of the code, it just says that you can't get a building permit unless, or if you have a private drive and there is a maximum of six parcels. So what we were asking for was a seventh parcel. The seventh parcel was to take the parcel in which the cabin right now exists and cut, cut out of that 32 acres, it's really 33.8 acres specifically, and give that to his daughter, his daughter and the son-in-law and grandchild live there. So he made an application for a variance, and the variance was heard on the 21st of April, and it was denied. Now, there was no written decision given for the, for the reason of the denial, but in the packet tonight, I noticed that in the minutes of the planning commission, it sets forth really the reason that it was denied. And what it says is, is that Chairman Haney asked for a motion, and Jack Mullenax made a motion to deny because he said that they may not intend on building a house, but future owners may. That was the reason given. Now, in requesting a variance, what you're really saying is that because of, because of certain circumstances and things beyond the control of the owner, that they're entitled to vary from what the regulations say, and you're allowed to go outside of that. I've represented government for 40-something years, and I understand, believe me, I'm usually sitting where you're sitting, and I understand that, you know, a variance is an exception, not a rule. But under certain circumstances, to apply strictly the ordinance just makes such a hardship on the property owner that it's just about insufferable, and that's what we've got here. Craig and his wife Deborah own this property, and when they bought the property in the early 80s, it was a large tract of land, they got part of this and kept part of this. He, his house is right on Mountain Olive Road, about an acre, and then you go all the way to the end of the private drive and you have these 33 acres. Now, the configuration of these lots has been the same since 1991. The ordinance in question was adopted the first time, not amendment, but the first time on July the 20th of 1994, three years after the way the property sits, it still sits that way. So the only thing that changed with this property was the county adopted an ordinance. Mr. DeVos didn't do anything. It just was sitting there the way it was, so he had nothing to do with, with this prohibition now that he's facing and for which he seeks a variance. There's just a few things that I would, that I would like to point out, hopefully to show why we think it ought to be reversed. First of all, we're not, we're not convinced that a variance is even necessary, and I'll tell you why. He should be able to divide his property as he sees fit, especially this four-acre track to his daughter, because under 22401, and I don't think there's any question that this is the code section, this is the ordinance that we're going under. This is what the county planning commission based its denial on. And to start off with, this 22401 comes under subdivision regulations. This is, this is, this is an ordinance, a code section, that is a part of 22-383 through 22-424, and those all deal with subdivisions. Mr. DeVos is not building a subdivision. If you look through the subdivision regulations through this whole, and I've read them from 383 to 424, I'm telling you, this situation doesn't fit anything in there. It's true, if you want to say he's taken one track and making two out of it, that's a subdivision of a track, and that is not what the subdivision Article 4 is talking about. It's talking about what you all think and what I think and what a normal citizen would think is a subdivision. And this doesn't even come close. So we think, first of all, there's not a variance required because this is, this prohibition comes under subdivisions. The second thing is, is that this prohibition, and it's called 22401, no permit for structures without publicly accepted and maintained access. And what it says is, no building permit shall be issued for a building or use on a lot which does not, and then it gives three things. We didn't apply for a building permit. We just were taking four acres off of 33. And so we didn't, we didn't apply for a building permit, and it sounds like this only kicks in when it talks about the granting or denial of building permits. And so we don't think, we don't think a variance is even needed on it. We think he just should be able to divide this up and give these four acres to his daughter, who lives there right now. The third thing is that the ordinance that created this prohibition was adopted after the property was in its current configuration. The ordinance was adopted in 1994, July the 20th of 1994, and all of this property was in place, the private way, just like it laid in, the topography, I mean, the lots, shapes, everything is just like it was in 1991. And so we see that when it, when this was adopted, it's not meant to cover the kind of property that he's got. And the reason being is, is that this, this code section, this 22401 3A, has several prohibitions. One, it says you can't do it if the, if the private way's not 50 feet. This private way, it's not even close to 50 feet. So how are we going to fix that? And then it says all the deeds talk about this private way, that they have to have a specific provision in there that the people that live along that private way are going to take care of that private way. And it gives an example, if you have four people on the private way, they're supposed to divide it up in four ways and keep the private way going. Well, there's no way to do that because the deeds were done in the 80s, so we can't comply with that. I mean, when you look at this ordinance under the subdivisions and you look at what it's saying, there's no way to go back and put this genie in a bottle. It's, I think it's very clear that what this was intended for was the future development of property. If you're going to put in a private way, you want to put houses on it or lots on it, here's what you can do. So if I have a piece of property and I'm going to put in a private way, I come to this if I'm going to do a subdivision, and I go, it's very clear, I'd have six, six lots on this, or six houses. That's it. And it's got to be 50 feet. There was a gentleman, I think, talking earlier tonight, said he saw where he had to have 50 feet. See, that's before it's done. The only thing that Mr. DeVos did wrong was he didn't have some kind of foretelling knowledge, some kind of a crystal ball to say, "You know, I better do this because in three years, the county is going to adopt an ordinance, and the way our property sits out, I'm not going to be able to use 32 acres down here." If you look at it to sort of, I've always said, if you can take an argument and make it fit to its absurdity, instead of 32 acres, what if you... it fit to its absurdity, instead of 32 acres, what if you had 320 acres? What if you had 500 acres? What if this private road already had 25 lots or parcels on it? What would you do? And so we see that, that there's just no way that, that it could apply, and, and there's no way, um, that this ordinance is applicable, and for a lot of reasons, to this piece of property. The other is that a variance, if you think a variance is required, a variance is surely justified. What I read from the planning commission, and what I understand, is that after he made his three-minute presentation, there was a motion to deny, and it was seconded, and all the, the planning commission, but one voted, uh, to deny it. Well, here's what the variance, and, and again, I don't think it applies, but if you looked under the same, the same, uh, Article 4, if you look under 22409 for variances. Now, all through the code of ordinances for the county, there are variances for special use permits, variances of zoning, variances for land planning, variances for building, just all kinds of variances, but this is the one that comes under Article 4. And it says, and, and by the way, all of these different variances are worded differently, but they all have the same intrinsic value to them, and it's, if you've got a property owner that cannot comply with the law as it's written, then they need a break. You need to work with them, you need to make it non-prohibitive for they can't use the property. And what this says is, when the planning commission finds, uh, that extraordinary hardship may result from strict compliance with these regulations due to the unusual topography or other conditions beyond the control of the subdivider, it may, uh, vary the regulations so that substantial justice may be done and the public interest, uh, secured. Now, I think the reason that this still applies to subdivisions is because you come down and being, it says plans for all such developments, and there's not a development. But, but if you look at the variance part, which is all we can go by, uh, here's the situation. We got a situation on a piece of property that was not created by Mr. DeBolus. It was created by the adoption of an ordinance. Second of all, um, if, if you, and you can only get to the 32 acres through this private way, there's no other way to go. You don't have any other access, it's the only access it's got. So if you don't find that he's got a hardship based upon these criteria, then what has happened is, his piece of property in 1994 became frozen in time, he didn't know it. But the way the property was then, is the way the property's got to stay, stay for ad infinitum, can never change it. He's got 33.8 acres that he can't do one thing with. It's got a cabin on it, a little cabin he's got on it, that's it. Oh, I guess he could put a garden on it, I guess he could grow grapes on it, I guess he could maybe dove hunt on it. He can't do anything else. He can't develop it, he can't subdivide it, he can't, he can't do anything. And, and that is what a variance is meant to do, is to take away the harshness of the strict construction of an ordinance. And we, we see this happen all the time because of these circumstances. But if, if you just say to him, as the planning commission has said, uh, you've got six, if you get one more at seven, uh, that's against ordinance, done. I didn't quite even understand about building a house, because the ordinance that, that we're talking about, the prohibition, it talks about a tract of land, it talks about a house, it talks about a parcel, all just interchangeably. So you could have a private way with one house and five empty lots, and, and apparently there's no difference in that and, and six houses. But what is happening here is that it's not changing the complexion of anything. And with my example about having 500 acres, would, would you really tell somebody with 500 acres that had it just like it is, but when this ordinance was adopted, sorry, that's the way it goes. You just got a bad luck at the draw. That's not reasonable, it's not, it's not, uh, it's not legal, and it's not justifiable. I, I don't think, you know, when you look at variances, you're supposed to go through these things, you're just supposed to look at all these different, different kind of criteria and see if there's any reason why this man needs relief misordinance, and that's what we're really asking for. I guess lastly, uh, is that the law says, and this is the last part of, of my argument in writing, is that, is that if you, if you deny a variance, uh, or you apply a zoning, or you apply land use development, or anything to do with the use of your property, if you apply it so strictly that you really take away any substantial benefit of the future use of that property, it's considered a taking of property in violation of the Fifth and, uh, uh, a Fourth and Fifth Amendments of the Constitution. It's a taking without, uh, it's taking without compensation. I cited a case in there, a 92 Supreme Court decision, where one of the things, there's two discrete things you look at, and one of them that applies here, is that where regulations, and quoting the court, where regulations denies all substantial economically beneficial or productive use of the land, it's a taking. Essentially, his 32 acres, the viable use of this land, other than the way it was in 1994 on July the 20th, it's gone. He has no substantial viability. And when the planning commission applies this 22409, or 401 3A, just period, then it seems to me to be violative of the federal law, uh, and it deprives him of any economical, substantial, the economical benefit. One of the things it says is that if the property was okay and not in violation of anything before the ordinance, it ought to be considered on its face not to be violative of common law. It's legal then, it ought to be legal now, and to make it illegal by an adoption of an ordinance, which is really, uh, post-effective, it's now making it impossible for him to use his property without any kind of compensation. And so I think that if you look at it and you think about the sensibility of it, if you think about his situation and why these regulations need to be varied for, ergo variance, varied for him, is because he's got a situation, a gentleman he didn't create, and he's got a situation that's taken a, a nice piece of property that, that he retired on, he's a former educator in Walker County, he's been retired several years now, and he's got a piece of property he essentially can't use. And so we're asking to just look at this, consider it, and, um, and look at the federal law, and, and I think you'll come to the conclusion, we would say, first, it doesn't require variance, he's okay to go out there and do that. Second of all, if it is required, um, then he's entitled, under your own ordinance and under the law of land development, general law of land development, he's entitled to have a variance and allow him to do this because of the situation. And, um, and then last of all, I think you'll see that it, it does violate his right, and, and you just, you just can't imagine what you would do if you had a piece of property that you'd had 40 years, and now someone says, uh-uh, can't do it, can't do it anymore. So I just appreciate your time, I know you're tired, I appreciate you listening to me, and I appreciate you considering this, and, uh, and, uh, I, I just feel like that for all the reasons I stated in the brief and tonight, uh, we would appreciate, uh, him being allowed to do what he wants to do, and that's call out this four acres for his daughter and give it to her or family. And I'll answer any questions you got.
No, I'm gonna bet some time to read them, yeah.
Uh, one thing, you may not know this right off, but the other five property owners that's on this private drive, roughly about what is their acreage number?
You could, if you, I can't tell you, Mr. Chairman, if you look on Exhibit, Collective Exhibit 2, you can certainly see it. I mean, there, there are all kinds of different shapes.
David's got a big map back there. Mr. Womack?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Please, sir. A wonderful presentation, a lot of information. Uh, I'm still trying, I want to understand in simplicity, what is the hardship that this is causing?
The hardship is he, he essentially has 32 acres with a little cabin on it. That was just built for them to go back there on, because there's a, there's a creek that runs through there. And, uh, the, the hardship is, is that, uh, he can't do anything with it. He's got 32 acres and a cabin, and it has to stay just like that, period. You, you can't do anything with the 32 acres because that's considered one parcel, and so he's just stuck. So the way you see it right now, uh, Mr. Blake, the way you see it right now?
My name's Mr. Askew.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's Mr. Blake.
It can't, it can't change.
Well, my point being, my point being is, is, and I'm, I'm just trying to take it all into, you've given us a lot to look at. He's got 32 acres at the end of a very narrow gravel private drive. We have a lot of these rules and regulations that you've referred to, uh, and ordinances and, and planning and zoning is to ensure safety and, and, and life safety is number one. And if you started today and wanted to do something with that 32 acres, if he wanted to do something starting today, he'd have to have a 50-foot easement in there for utilities and for, for emergency services to be provided, i.e. ambulance, fire truck, and those things. So I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to fill this hardship, but if, if you wanted to do something with that 32 acres to, to, to develop it, or, 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 or add more residences back there, uh, then you would have to bring the road up to a standard that it wouldn't be a private drive anymore. Uh, it would be built up to a county specification so that we could provide those essential life safety services that we are, that's our position, you know, that's, but number one is, is, is safety, you'd think it's just purchase equipment for our emergency services, and I think that's where a lot of it kind of comes into play. We don't want to, we don't want to stop, uh, anyone from doing something with their property, and he said they have a beautiful place, I'm very familiar with, I've been all the way to the back end of it, and I've seen the cabin.
Probably saw it when the tornado tore everything up, up there.
Well, I was there before, I believe, if I can remember correctly, but, uh, but, but no, I, I, I just, I'm, I'm just trying to understand that what the necessary hardship is, if they're already living in the cabin, is, is that what, we're living in the cabin?
They're living in the cabin, and he wants, at this point of his life, he wants to give his daughter, for, she doesn't own it, and he wants to give her this four acres on which that cabin sits. But the thing is, is that he isn't applying for a building permit. If he were building a building, he would come under the building regulations. I mean, that's just the way it is. The, the thing is, is that he is limited, and, and I guess let me ask you this, Mr. Okay, if you, one of the things is, is you talk about public intent, preserving the, the public safety and so forth. If, if I were to ask, where did six, where did six lots come from? Where did four lots come from, which used to be? Where did, and, and the, and the thing is, is that what was the basis of it? What was the justification for it? And it just applies to all private ways. Well, what if you had a private way that was two and a half miles? Is that to be considered differently than a private way that was 100 feet long? And what if, what if you had, uh, five different lots, or six different lots that were over double-digit acreages, I mean, uh, triple-digit acreages? I mean, I'm just saying, okay, what was the justification for the sixth, and why not the seventh, or should it have been the five, or what about 13, or how's it?
Well, that's, that's a great question, and that's the question that I don't think you nor we have that answer for. Four was what was in place for, for, and, and we actually as a body increased that to six, to try to help with alleviating problems and, and restricting and giving people more opportunity. But when you're talking about a private drive, that's, that's, uh, and like I said, that's of that construction, um, it, it, you know, why, you would never, I, I would never want to see 15 or 20 houses on a gravel, if we could, if we could help from it, because you can't even pass going in, there's not even, you know, it's, and I'm not, I'm not against, I'm not trying to speak negatively, well, I'm just trying to, here again, understand the hardship, the, the, the argument of the hardship, because I don't see a hardship. I, I see that there's, you know, there are, that the county did a zoning, uh, regulations, and we have planning and zoning regulations that we all, you know, fall under, and, and I want to see him be able to, you know, to, to give his, to give his daughter the, the property, if that's what he chooses to do. Uh, but, but when you reach the maximum that we have put into place, then what are we gonna do, like you just said? What's the difference in seven, eight? Well, when you get to eight lots, that's a minor subdivision. So there's different, so that, when, if you go to eight lots, where if you had, like you said, larger tracks or multiple, well, once you get to eight, there, then the regulations change instantly.
But the reason, the reason you're giving variances is because it's when, as you well know, when you adopt an ordinance, it's an organic thing, it's always changing, you don't ever have any idea, and what the variance is for is to allow you to address things
Outside of that.
Outside of that, and, and present special circumstances to your governing body. That's what that's all for. And for instance, right now, she, uh, if she wanted to build a new home, she couldn't, because there's a house already on it. We just couldn't do it. You'd have to tear it down.
Well, what, so if we, if they were granted a variance for, for this one lot, and they decided to, say, to, to build a new home, and then, and I'm just, it's all speculative, because that's what we're doing, it's all speculative, just like you said, when the man bought the property years ago, you don't know what's gonna change. Laws and rules change every day, you know, and you're very familiar with that. But what's to say that, you know, that the grandchild may later want to build a, you know, I, I'm just saying, it's a perpetual, how do we, how do you know that it's not gonna be a perpetual thing, that you're opening up a door for, you know, I, I mean, I'm just asking to try to, I just want good talk, conversation on this, so we can all understand.
Let me tell you, I have believed me, I have gone over this over and over, uh, from every angle. I think the biggest distinct factor here, if you, if you think that a variance is needed, is that this is a piece of property that was not developed after the ordinance, it's not a piece of property that changed after the ordinance, it's not a piece of property that anything expanded after the ordinance. It was just this way, and it just seems totally unfair, and, and really contrary to the law to say that something that happened afterwards that's already in place is just in stone, it cannot be changed, because of something that he absolutely didn't do. I can see, uh, I can see from your standpoint, that if I had a private way, and I decided I was gonna sell off, um, seven lot, eight lots, and then I said, well, I'd like to, like, build a house out there. No, well, that's my own doing, that was my problem, whether I knew it or not, that was my problem. But if he had come to the county and said, look, here's what I want to do, here's the way it's gonna be, here's the configuration, is that okay? They would have said, absolutely. Because it was three years before it ever became even into existence, and so, just like this ordinance has changed over the years, situations change, and, and, and this one has not, this one's just where it was. But again, I, I really believe, gentlemen, if you look at, if you look at Article 4, if you look at that, and look where this, this prohibition is, is placed, I'm telling you, this is for subdivision development, it's for subdivision development along a private way. I, I just, I just appreciate, I, I told a judge in Atlanta one time, he said, well, if I do what you want to do, I gotta read this, this whole stack of stuff. And I said, if, if you will read it, I'll get down on my knees and beg you right here in this courtroom in front of God and everybody else, if you will just please read it. And all I'm saying is, I don't think, I, I think he's outside of, of this prohibition because it's not a subdivision. Oh, I, I just feel passionate about that, and, and we all disagree, and we, uh, but, but I, I appreciate your time, and if you have any more questions, I'd be glad to answer, but that's just my position on it, is that you don't need an, I mean, you don't need a variance because it's not, but if you do, he's entitled to it, and, and please don't apply this so strictly that he's, he's just stuck with a piece of property that's beautiful, he can't do a thing with it.
Well, a couple of things, and Mark started on this earlier, you know, part of it is, is the life safety of getting access to emergency services and all, but also the fact that we have a lot of these private drives throughout the county, and so when new people come into the community... And so when new people come into the community, they think it's a county road.
Oh, yeah.
And so then they come in and want to know why it's not being maintained by the county. And then it creates, you know, friction, creates hardship, because they're saying, well, I moved here, there was a sign, you know, they don't know that...
It was a blue sign.
It was a blue sign, they didn't realize that. And so then they're like, hey, you know, we just bought this half a million dollar house, and it's on this private drive, and there's this easement. The county should make this a road. And so that's part of why I think these limits have been put in place over time. But you made a couple of comments, that you said that, you know, we're prohibiting them from subdividing this 33 acres. They have the right to apply to subdivide as a subdivision.
I don't want that though.
They'd have to bring it up, but we're not prohibiting that, we're not limiting that. You were leading us down the pathway that, you know, we're not allowing them to use their property, or couldn't, you know, but they're just stuck with it. They couldn't do anything to it. You mentioned they could divvy on it, they could do some of these other things, but it's a little more to that. They could subdivide it, they could develop it, but they've got to meet those subdivision standards.
Well, I don't think so, Mr. Commissioner, because it's very clear, if you're going to follow the strict construction of the ordinance, the ordinance says that you can, what it says is that you... You cannot... You cannot get a building permit, so you could subdivide it, I guess all you wanted to, but, which is all he was wanting to do, is just take and make another track. But it says, for these three things, but a private drive, or permanent recorded easement, or right-of-way which serves no more than six separate residential dwellings, lots, tracks, it makes no distinction. So if you've got six of anything, this one's got five houses and one track, that's six, period. You can't divide it?
Well, my point was, if they took this 33 acres and wanted to develop it, they would have to bring everything up to the subdivision guidelines that's in the ordinance, which would be making that private drive into a road that can be accepted by the county as they completed.
Oh, well, I mean, now you're talking about, but it's not. That's the whole thing. If you take a private road, but if you're saying, yeah, if they make a road, and they get, do it right, and make a, yeah, but that's not what...
But there is a pathway. You were kind of leading...
No, sir, I would never lead you in that way. I just wouldn't want. I'm telling you, I read it plum right out of here, and what we have to look at is what we've got. And what we've got's a private way. We don't have a public road.
Right, you don't. But it is possible that it could be turned into a public road if there was a desire by the county.
Now you're talking about a whole set of different circumstances.
Yeah, we've talked about...
What I'm talking about is what they can do with it right this moment. But I would never mislead you if you think I would.
No, I was also misleading, I said, just leading us down the pathway that they cannot ever subdivide it, they could never develop it.
They can't, not in its current condition. I don't know that anybody intends on that road, and by the way, nobody's here to speak against it. Nobody was here at the planning commission to speak against it. Mr. DeBollis, on two different occasions, this time and the last time, talked to every, every person that was notified. Everybody's just happy with it, copacetic with it, but, you know, that's what he is, that's what he's got right now. We're not looking at a subdivision. That's why I said, I don't think this statute even, I mean, this ordinance even applies. But that's just my opinion, and that's an opinion of my client.
Any other questions, Mr. Wall?
I appreciate your time. I really do. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
I mean, if you want my opinion, I can give you my opinion. I'm not sure what you're asking.
I just don't particularly, if there's anything else on your position or...
Well, I would like to hear your opinion, and then I, and I don't know that you might not want me to review some of this for us.
Can I make a real quick comment?
Yes, sir. Come to the microphone, so everybody can hear you, please.
Thank you for your attention on this busy night. Let me just tell you real briefly how I got here. Turned 71 this past year. At that stage in my life where I'm trying to get some, some things in order. My daughter and her husband, and they just had a baby nine months ago. They live in that little cabin that we built 20 years ago down on the creek. Right now, if I passed out and dropped dead here on the floor, and sitting here this long, I sometimes felt like I might do that, actually, but in my will, my daughter gets the 32, give or take, acres and the little house, we call it the little house. Getting things in order, and I said, you know, it's a young family, they want to own a house. I've owned that property for almost 40 years. I've worked in Walker County for decades. My daughter went to Farrowlin Schools. That little grandchild's going to go to Farrowlin Schools. I said, I'm not going to wait till I'm in the grave, I'm going to carve out, and the acreage was just arbitrary. Just, I said to the surveyor, just four acres about. They said, you can't give that property to your daughter. So I asked for the variance because I thought that's what variances were for, to vary things. Now, so I appreciate you considering that. But as for the safety issues, in this day and age, even though that cabin is in the middle of nowhere, on a gravel road, I got UPS, I got FedEx, I've got Junior, when they built the cabin, Junior's building supply brought the blocks. I mean, an ambulance or a fire truck can get down that road, I guarantee you. All I'm trying to do, we're not, there'll be no more traffic, there'll be not another house built on there, there'll be no development on there. I know you think, well, what if? But the intention is to just have my family own the property that they're going to get someday, and as an owner, pay taxes on it, be invested in Walker County, and contribute to Walker County, and be someone who appreciates Walker County as much as I have over the years. So I appreciate your time and consideration for this. Thank you.
Okay, I think our planning director, David, do you have something to add?
Just a little on that.
Need you to speak up a little bit more, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. When the property owner came to the planning and zoning office, he was told about the variance at all, as far as six houses. But if you look on your map, on Lot One, where he actually lives, he was advised that if he came off of Mount Olive with his driveway, that would open up one parcel on the private drive. But he didn't want to do that. Because he does have 130 foot of road frontage on Mount Olive, it's only required to have 75.
Lot One has...
130 foot of road frontage on Mount Olive, which would, that would, that would take his driveway off the private drive, that would knock it down to five, that would give him the six. That is an option.
How do you feel about that option?
I don't hear more about it. I ran that by the planning commission, and they said they would get back to me, and I had not heard back from them, so that's...
Our planning commission said they'd be back with you?
Yes.
Or the planning and zoning office?
The other group that denied the variance...
Planning Commission?
Yeah, I called the office when I was first...
I think we're confused. I think that, and I'm going to say, I think, because the planning and zoning would not have, that would not have been a recommendation from them as far as that. But we did offer that when he came down to ask for the variance.
To apply reasonably...
Yeah, because we looked at it, Christie and I looked at it together, and by our new ordinance, there are six. And he was asked if he could, if since his daughter is in the will to get it all, just do that. But I'm not really sure the reason why. I didn't get into that, but...
Did you, did you speak to me or send me something? I really don't recall when that being all...
When you came to fill out the application, and I was, and I was back and paid, Christie and I, we were there, and we advised you, you could put in a drive off of Mount Olive, but you didn't want to do that. You wanted for yours to continue off the private.
Here's, here's the thing. We're supposed to look at these things as they exist. I mean, you can always change something and modify something, but he's got, when you come off that, his driveway is here. That's what goes into his house. And so now you're saying, you would have to change to come off Mount Olive road and come in, and I'm not saying that that's not impossible. What I am saying is that you need to look at it the way it is. You need to look at the situation it's got in the city, and what I said applies to this One, he either needed the variance or he didn't. And second of all, the variance under the circumstances as it presented, the planning commission should be granted, and to apply it strictly is going to violate his property rights, but that's what, yeah, you can do all kinds of things, but what we're talking about is the situation it's got right now, and the circumstances, and none of the laws that exist right now.
That's true.
Now, I guess we'll have to leave it something, if it's not ready.
Would you like some time to consider that? Would you like us to take...
No, we'd like a really, I think, why our position is, and whether, whether this board of commissioners believes it needed a variance or not. If it didn't, then he can do what he wants to do. If it did, we think that there's justification to grant it. And if you don't, then we'll see where that goes.
You know, just have some time to digest all the documents Mr. Wallen presented to us.
Yeah, pass this one on the panel.
Yeah.
Some stuff we received tonight we didn't have.
Yes.
So is that a motion to table it for two weeks?
Um, yes.
For our next meeting within two weeks?
Yes, I would like to put that in the form of a motion to table this agenda item so that we can have a little more time to look at the documents Mr. Wallen gave us and be a little more informed about it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz to table this item to our next regular scheduled meeting in two weeks. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Have a second, by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board?
Um, well, I just, I, I see, I see both sides of this, and, and, you know, we've got regulations like I stated in place for a reason. I do understand this and see it a little differently as it being, and there was a question that was answered that I didn't ask out of respect. But when you said that your daughter would receive it upon your passing, so there's no other, there's no other people in, and there's no other siblings, or, so it's that, when you pass, it's going to go to her anyway. And so you're wanting to just go ahead and get it deeded to her now so that she can own the home?
She wants, he wants to see her build her house before he passes.
Now, can I speak?
Yes, yes. Please, please come up here to the mic.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Antigone DeBollis. I'm the daughter of Craig DeBollis, and I'm really grateful for my dad because he's offered my young family a path to homeownership. And as you know, during this economy and how everything's going, that means so much to be able to have equity in something. I grew up in Walker County. My dad's been a school administrator and has worked in the county. I've lived here almost all my life, and this is really important for me to raise my daughter here. I'm his only daughter, and I have one little girl, and that is the only child that we're able to have. And for him to be able to give something from one generation to the next without a huge undue financial burden on our family would really mean, I know it sounds like a small thing, but to our family, that would be a lot. And I would just ask that you consider the circumstances here when you're thinking about this. It would be very difficult for me to have to wait and think about anything happening to my dad. That would be the last thing on my mind. I can't even believe I have to contemplate that in this conversation. But if, if he could transfer the property to us and deed it to me, to his only kid, I would just ask that, and that you look at all of the circumstances that we've talked here tonight about, and consider that we would be amazing taxpayers in this community. We would, I work here now, my husband works here now, and he's in the wine business, and loves Walker County, grew up in Tennessee and loves Georgia, and we have a lot to offer. We're about to send our daughter to preschool here, and she will grow up in Walker County schools just like her mom. And if, if you could look at the circumstances and please consider our family, that would mean the world to us, and we so appreciate all of that. And I just thank you for taking the time to listen to us about this issue.
See, I want to look at the search, man. There's just a lot of stuff that Mr. Wallen passed out that I hadn't seen. I want to look through, want to talk to our attorney about it, want to talk something about private drives as he misses some things tonight, so I'm not saying we're, I just want some time to absorb it.
I understand that.
We're working one hour and three now, we're halfway through.
I know, and it's so long, and I thank you so much for that time.
Sure.
The safety issue is also one that I wanted to address. That cabin has been there for 30 years, and it's safe to be able to get down there. 911 came out, we have an address, they have all the services that we need as it exists today, whether Dad was going to stay there, or fish there, or hunt there, do whatever, it's still the same. Nothing has changed. So all that happened is that we moved in, and instead of paying rent to him every month and having that in limbo and not having a position to be able to have equity in anything, we're just asking to change the ownership outright. So the safety issues to me don't seem like there's any circumstantial change there because there's no new building, there's no new, we're not asking to develop or do anything else like we've already gone over. But to me, it has been safe and is safe, and I wouldn't want to live there with my nine-month-old baby as a new mom and a new parent if I thought that for any reason it would be unsafe. So please don't let that reflect negatively upon the whole situation when you're looking at it, because of course, safety is very important to our family. And so I just wanted to add that as a finer point on the end of what I was saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? We do have a motion on the floor with a second, so we'll have to take, take a vote on that.
We want to see, go on and table it and let the attorney look it over, and then come back, have them, have them come back and give them a decision.
Yeah, we can digest all the material and digest what the family said and Mr. Wallen said.
Okay, any more discussion of the board? So we have a motion to table this until our next regular scheduled meeting in two weeks, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Hearing none, we'll put this back on our agenda too.
Again, thank you all so much.
Thank you all for being here tonight.
And I hope I didn't, I hope I didn't offend anyone.
Oh, no. No, 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 no. Oh, good. Good presentation.
I've been this way 48 years, I'm still this way, so...
Good, good presentation. You did good.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Eugene Hester requests for partial rezon of the 4.33 acres from an R2 to C1 for property located at 126 Black Circle Spur, North Highway 27, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial, zero dash 329, dash 1, dash 021A. The planning commission's recommendation is to approve this request. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that we support that and approve it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second to approve this request. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Hearing none, this is approved. Thank you, Mr. Hesters. Thank you for staying with us. Okay, the next one is, Ramanda Melton requests a rezon from A1 to R2 for property located at 189 Kensington Road, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax map impartial, number zero dash two, seven, four, dash two, dash zero, zero, one. zero dash 274 dash 2 dash 001. Planning commission's recommendation is a deny. David, do you have anything additional to add on the, uh, Kensington Road, sir?
I'd love to, Ms. Melton, um, after the first one, could you bring that plaque back up? There's, I think I misunderstood something. If y'all remember when we changed the road frontage, A1 stayed 100 foot and residential stayed, what is it, 75, R1, 2, and 3. And I got to thinking, I talked to her and she said, there's not going to be enough roads after the house is taken out. Cause that's going to, that's easily, that's going to stay A1. That's, that's my concern here is we have to keep the A1 at 100 foot right now. And her and I talked about that.
This is a draft, so that could be changed, right? I mean, Compton can just move that over since we've got, um, about a little over 200 and, about 230 feet or so in that.
And the, the house is going to take up 120 or something.
Well, that's 120 plus 82 plus 31.
I just want to make sure we don't double over 100 foot on A1.
So after looking at this and, and, and hearing everybody speaking on it, and I, and I see that the concern, what, what I heard were the concerns of the R2 and the duplexes and those kind of things. Like I said, the way the tracks are, the five-acre tracks, they can, they could do, uh, the four or five houses that are there and existing. My, my issue or question, and, and David, I believe I'll direct this to you, is they requested it, it through planning commission for, from A1 to R2. Um, and R2 is not what they should have requested. I think they realize that now that they know what R2 is versus A, R1. So to, 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 if, if they wanted to go to a R1 proposal, would they need to go back through the planning commission to do that and come to us with a recommendation on an R1 proposal?
Yes.
Because I'm very familiar with the area, and there are a lot of, of, of homes out there that are owned much smaller than five-acre tracks that are, are button agricultural on all sides. But I think that the main concern that I heard was the ability to do the townhouses, duplexes, mobile homes, that kind of stuff. When they're willing to put that into a deed restrictions that that can't be done, of course, it couldn't be in agricultural anyway, I, I'm, I'm just questioning or, or asking what guidance we should give them to, because I, I, I feel like it's a viable, it, it's, it's a viable request. I, I think it was requested in the wrong, in the wrong manner, I guess, is what I'm saying. Uh, 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 so-
Did you, these deed restrictions, did you present this at the planning or was this something after?
Yes, sir.
So they may need to look at that as well.
That, that, well, that's my thought is, and, and, and like I said, I, I didn't know if we would have to run it back through the planning commission or if we could make that decision here, but if it's come, and actually, it's just a recommendation from the planning commission. So I'm just kind of curious, do, I mean, as far as running it back through for another recommendation or making a decision and, you know, not allowing an, an R2, but possibly allowing the R1, that would still keep the integrity of the, the five-acre tracks around them and all it would do was, would be, allow them to downsize and sell their, their home, but the other, all the other tracks would still be under the agricultural umbrella.
And if they went back through the planning commission, would they have to pay another fee and everything?
We can wait, man.
Okay.
Do we, well, but, and, and so, that's my question is, do we need, do we need to do that? Do we have to do that? It being a recommendation, not a, that they don't have any, it's not an authority, it's a recommendation. And we can, and we can do it either, you know, some, I guess what I'm asking, you know, we can approve or deny, or we can go with the planning commission or against. So can we not change, uh, can we say, we deny the R2, but we would, uh, allow a variance in an R, for an R1? Or would, would you think it would be cleaner to run it back? I, I'm, I'm just trying to not bottleneck it up and, and get the bureaucracy out of it and get to the, get to the, to the brass tacks and try to-
Well, my, my opinion is, is that Georgia law says that zoning is something that has to be strictly complied with, and I think, uh, when we send out notices, when we're putting notices on placards in people's yards and they're under the impression it's R2, that it needs to be redone, uh, re-applied. I know that may sound sort of, uh, unusual, but that, that's my legal opinion.
Okay. All right.
So that, what he's getting at there, just for clarification, the planning commission would need you to go in and reapply for the R1 and update your map.
Your information, your map and all that.
And then if you wanted to include this deed restriction, I would submit that as well, and then they'll have to re-advertise it, so it's going to take a little time-
Okay.
-through that legal process that we have to do, but it will eventually end up back here before this board.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your time.
And the only thing that I would say in terms of expense, I mean, it's, it's your call, whether you want to waive it, but there's advertising expense. I mean, that, that's not the fault of the county, that is the fault of the property owner, and she is a licensed real estate agent, they're very active in real estate law, uh, ignorance of the law is not an excuse. I, I would make them at least pay the dead cost of the advertising, if not the refiling, because they're going to have to, this is still the same involvement by the, uh, county personnel to go through this process again.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think that would be something to be in the discretion of the planning director.
Yes, a question?
Yes.
When these, when they re-advertise, if we have questions on exactly, because this has been very confusing, I sort things out for a living, but I've had trouble finding both times we've been, it's been protectable, but who can I ask? Cause I know there's rules about not reaching out to the board.
David Brantley was just here in the blue shirt. He's the planning director and he, they're based in the planning office in Rock Springs. You could reach out to him.
And, and to clarify, there's not any restrictions. You can reach out to any board member at any time as a resident that you choose to.
Oh, okay.
And if we don't have an answer or we, or we don't feel comfortable with it, then we would refer you to the department or to, to whoever.
He was talking, reaching out to a planning board member.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about, uh, he, it was board members. I, I was assuming, uh, I, I, I'm sorry. You can reach out to the county commission board at any time you choose to.
Okay, the letter, the letter was sent, I'm about the other.
It was.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted to clarify to the, to the public that the, the board of commissioners is accessible to anyone at any time.
I just want to make sure if it's something we're okay with, we don't have to go.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay.
Um, yeah, I want to be careful because if you deny it, they can't bring it up for 12 months. I would just say that they would want to withdraw. I think the cleanest thing for them to do is to withdraw this-
And reapply.
-application, reapply. I would be concerned that if it was denied, it may be confused that, okay, now they can't do it for 12 months again. So my, my recommendation would be that they just withdraw that so that it doesn't come as a denial and then you can't do it for 12 months.
Okay, so we're withdrawing the request?
So then we would just say no action for that?
Yeah, I would just say that, uh, that their intention is, your intention, you know, just state that your intention is to withdraw your application so that it can be refiled as R1. I think that keeps you clean from the argument that, oh, well, it was denied, cause there is a provision that if a zoning request is denied, you can't bring it back for 12 months, and I don't want you to have that confusion.
Okay.
Okay? So you're just withdrawing.
Mine is just to withdraw it then.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I think that's the cleanest way for you. No confusion on that.
So the applicant's requested withdrawal, so we'll just move to the next item on our agenda. We have Ronald Sanders requests a rezon of R3 to A1 for property located at, uh, 136 Chalet Drive, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map impartial, zero 126 dash 003. The planning commission's recommendation was of approval. David, you got anything else to add on this one?
There's been some questions asked about, um, we did approve the, go to the A1, but it's been, just been some talk about adding it to where in agriculture, it goes to the low-intensity agricultural. Cause what that does, that 53 acres, that opens it up to where he can actually put chicken houses, feedlots, and slaughterhouses.
Well, it can do it as a light agricultural.
If you, these, these handouts, it'll tell you, low-intensity agriculture does not allow any of those threats, which would allow-
Is this property surrounded by R2 or R3 zoning, right?
He's, he's surrounded completely by residential, and that, that would, that would protect the citizens and it would protect him also. So my recommendation would be to go with the low-intensity agriculture, does it tell you, uh, low, on, uh, under number 10 on the second page, what it does not allow. Feedlots, poultry, hog and dairy operations. He can do his pasture land, he can do crops, he can do that, he can board his horses. He's just not allowed to go in and, in five years from now, put in five or six chicken houses, or feedlots, or any of that. It's still agricultural, it's just low density.
Um, we all know how much I like supporting ag operations and I do. This concerned me because of putting an ag operation in the middle of town, in a sense. So we definitely, I think, need to have stipulations or a conditional use variance, which I don't know, I'll ask the attorney, but I don't know which one is better, but I think we need to put some kind of stipulation on it, because yes, if we just put, say, okay, it's A1, and then Mr., Mr. Sanders, well, I'm going to sell it in two years, somebody can buy it, and I'm putting four chicken houses on it, and they could.
Well, on low-intensity agriculture, they couldn't.
That's what I'm saying, so.
So if we, so if we prove it under low intensity, then that, that, that provides those protections.
Well, I think that's a little far-fetched too, though, because chicken houses have a list of restrictions, and they're pretty hard to get in, especially-
Oh, yeah, yeah. It, it, it is a slight exaggeration, but I think we do need to put some kind of stipulation so that we just be careful with what we own it.
I mean, I say it different ways. I mean, the way I'll claim to be for property owners and property owners' rights, and then we want to put a bunch of red tape to jump through, so that's just my two cents.
How would you feel about like the low-intensity, where the, the, the only thing it does stop is the-
I mean, who's the property owner? I'd like to know how he feels about it.
Do you like to look at this?
No, I, what was the definition of feedlot? We're going to have a couple cows, a few cows, but you're talking-
Well, that's actually the commercial business, where you, you clean, you clean them up for slaughter there.
Yeah, no, for your personal use is not that. Light agriculture, you, you would, that wouldn't-
We don't have an issue with chicken houses and slaughterhouse and what you said in the feedlot.
Yeah, we would be fine with low intensity, and that's not our-
I think it's exactly what y'all want to do, and it would protect, it would protect.
Yeah, for our decisions, we got pasture land for horses and one to board a few horses. We've been cleaning up the property a whole lot. I mean, it would-
Yeah, just, let me read this for everybody, and I know those watching at home too. The low-intensity agriculture, it says, low-intensity agriculture uses includes croplands, pastures, uh, question, plant-
Agriculture.
Agriculture, I'm sorry. Plant, uh, nurseries and buildings which, any accessory to an agricultural use, this category of use does not include feedlots, poultry, hog and dairy operations, and processing or distribution plants for agriculture products and supplies, low-density residential use is allowed.
Yeah, so, so you can still use, it's still residential, but it just knocks out the, the commercial operations, but it doesn't limit them for, to having basically a gentleman farmer, whatever.
So you could grow crops, raise your own cattle, horses, those type things and be-
We would still be allowed to board a few horses.
I don't, I don't say that it doesn't have a restriction, man, it just restricts to feedlots and, and those, so, uh, I don't think that would, y'all are already doing that, you're already boarding some now, aren't you? You're not.
So y'all would be okay with that?
Yeah, those are all the restrictions that we mentioned there.
Okay. All right, so what's the board's pleasure? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve it with the, on the low-density agricultural.
Low-intensity.
Low, low, low intensity, I'm, I'm sorry. And, and the reason, and I'll give you my reasoning as well, is because the, the commissioner Hart made a point, and, and I, I don't want us to have to go through a lot of red tape, but it is surrounded completely by residential. I'm very familiar with that location as well, and it is in, it's in the back of a residential area, so that way it does kind of protect the, 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 the existing neighbors as well. It gives you the opportunity to do what you'd like to do, and it protects them from, from, you know, going in and doing something that, that you could do in just a regular agricultural, because it's a lot more open.
Does that still require the five-acre tracks if you, if you want to build a house on it?
Good question.
Yes, because it's on date, it's-
Yeah, it's agricultural, so yes, it would, it's an agricultural track, so it would, it'd be the same, it'd be the same as you would get with a regular A1.
Okay, so we have a motion, so we have a motion. Commissioner asks you to approve with the conditions of the low-intensity agriculture. Do we have a second? I'll say it. Have a second, my Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's approved with those conditions of low, uh, intensity. Okay, the next one we have is Randy and Mary Harden requests a rezon from A1 to R2 for property located at 833 McIntyre Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30739, tax map impartial, zero dash 356 dash 014. Planning commission's recommendation is to deny. David, do you like to come up, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, McIntyre.
Oh, Mr. Harden.
Yes.
Uh, what it was, um, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, where is he? Okay. Uh, you had split off land before, behind you to the side, and there were more than five acres in each one, correct? And that's what the planning and zoning committee looked at. There was what, one had nine, one had seven, now he's asking to split this and less than five acre tracks.
And the property around it is zoned?
It's, it's all A1.
It's all?
That, that's basically-
And I, 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 I'm, here again, I'm trying to understand that, R1 or R2 is, is what y'all are asking for. You're asking for a single residence, so, so here again, this is about the third time on this, on this agenda tonight, that we've got-
I thought y'all asked for R2.
He, he did, he didn't know what-
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's about the, the second or third time here that, that someone has, has requ, made a request to planning commission, but wasn't sure or didn't get the information, whether we got wires crossed or whatever.
But what happened was my wife, we didn't, we were playing about R1, 2, 3, we told nothing about it, and she went to the planning commission office, she asked them to explain to her which one that we needed, and she tried to explain to her, and the lady said, this is what you need, so that's what we went with.
Well, I'm, I can't argue that, but what we do, we print out. Did they, did she give you a, a printout of the zoning? Do you remember? She should have, because what we do, we try not to recommend to anybody what they need. We give them the ordinances, what R1, R2, R3 are, and this is, this is what they decide on.
That, that, that's, that's what, right, that's what we should, that's what we're supposed to do, and I think that that's what we do, but somehow, like I said, I've seen on, on this particular agenda, multiple times where we've, we've not gotten any, so maybe we need to look at how we're getting the information out or making sure, and I mean, I'm not saying that any- so maybe we need to look at how we're getting the information out, or making sure, and I mean, I'm not saying that anybody's at fault, but I'm just saying we need to correct this, because we don't need to keep having the same, you know, the issue, because they're asking really for an R1 variance for that, they're not asking for R2. R2 is duplexes, mobile homes, triplexes, so yeah, you see people, yeah, I don't want that in my neighborhood, but then when you're talking about building a family residence on a family farm, I just see it differently, and I just think that that is a confusing factor, especially for the planning commission.
That's intense, she run these plans.
Right.
Could we approve this contingent on she could only build what's the plan she run this?
That was my intention, was to tell you that's all that's going on at this.
So, could we approve it with that modification?
I think so, but isn't the issue whether or not it's less than five acres?
Yes.
And it was previously subdivided, when they subdivided it the first time, they could have accomplished their goal by taking some of the nine and saving it, and some of the seven and saving it. Instead, they chose the way that they did, and now they're less five, but it's.
I'm, I'm not too sure on the acreage, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, please. Instead of doing the nine and the seven point two, if they had gone five and five, there would have been more, there would not have been any question on the acreage.
And I think they probably would have done that had they known that.
What we would have done.
That's, that's, that's my point, is I don't think that they're trying to circumvent the system. I, I think it was a, it's a miscommunication somewhere, it appears, but now, that, that's just my opinion. But I, I, I think that you.
And I hate to drag them back through another month or two, because they got building plans and having to live with family. So, I make a motion that we approve it contingent on these building plans.
So, you're approving the R2?
Yes. I make a motion that we approve it with a modification that they can only build what is on these plans.
So, if we put that modification in there, it wouldn't, it, 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 it's kind of a, the R2 or R1 wouldn't matter if, if that's, if we, if that's what they're gonna, and see, they asked for R2, they asked for an R2, and, and that's, that's not what they, I don't think that's what their intent was, I said that, that may have been what they asked for, but I, I'm still very concerned about the same.
Should we not advise people?
That's what I'm saying, I'm concerned, that's exactly what I'm saying, I'm concerned that we're having the same, the same.
You have to be very careful in not providing legal advice. Uh, that's where we're gonna get into trouble, and if it's important enough that we're talking about dividing property, it seems like, uh, you know, you either read the statute, if you don't understand it, the entire lawyer, if you're gonna be making big investments in, in property and transferring property, but, uh, you're gonna run into all these things, well, that's not what they told me, and then it's a swearing contest back and forth. Yeah, we did tell you, no, you didn't, uh, I mean, that's, that's the issue. Where did, where does it stop? You know, what information do you provide? You know, it's, I know we're trying to be helpful to people and not have to have them incur legal fees, but sometimes you need, you may need a lawyer, it's like, if I need my car oil changed, I can either change it myself and take the consequences that I'm doing it right, or take it to mechanic and have it done.
Well, I, I, I agree and disagree, I, I'll tell you, a clear path is what we think we're gonna have. We're gonna, we're gonna establish a clear path that, that where we don't have the, the miscommunication, the misinterpretation, the misassumption, or whatever, we need a clear path that people can, when they go in that, go into the office or whatever, that you, like you said, they do have A, B, C, or D, and they know exactly what they're doing. And I'm concerned, because like I said, I've, we've, we've had several of these to come up tonight, under the same, kind of the same issue. Not, not pointing finger, there's no finger pointing, no problem, it's just a, it's an issue that we need to correct. And so, uh, you know, I don't want to hold somebody, like I said, I, I'm not trying to hold anybody hostage, or I don't want to give legal advice, but, you know, I'll just sit here and listen to two or three people, two or three different cases say that, well, this is what, you know, we were told, or we were, or we thought we needed to do, and so I, I just don't, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ensure you that.
I definitely got that opinion on this case.
Sir?
I definitely got that opinion on this case.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, and that's what I'm saying, I mean, I don't think it's a hocus pocus by any means. It may have got plenty of acreage over there, uh, you know, and if they want it, if it's, you know, and, and what's the, what is the actual, uh, the, um, so you were asking, y'all were asking for a rezone from R, from A1 to R2, and how many acres is in that tract?
Five point four acres.
And you're wanting, the R2, how many acres?
Well, if we go less than five acres on that, we're gonna have to have the whole thing rezoned.
Okay.
We won't have five acres left.
Okay.
Give them two.
You got a total of five?
Five point four.
Four, two left to divide.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I saw what you're saying.
Yeah, their house.
Okay, I saw what you're saying. So, he's just wanting to rezone five point?
Well, I thought it was less than five.
No, he's needing to split that basically in half, because all he has left is that five.
Right.
And he's wanting his son and daughter to build a house.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to change the zoning to R2 with the conditions that the attached building plans be executed, right? Okay, so do we have a second for that motion?
I'll say it.
We have a second, my Commissioner Stoltz, to accept the R2 with the conditions of the building plans. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none?
Aye.
All right, we have one opposition, Mr. Hart does oppose, so, uh, it is approved with the condition. Okay, the next one we have is BLH Enterprises LLC requests a rezone from R2 to A1 for property located at 1183 Arnold Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30739. Tax map impartial number zero dash three two six dash two dash zero two five. Uh, the planning commission's recommendation was to deny. Uh, David, would you like to come forward, please?
Uh, this one, um, after hearing some of the complaints from the citizens, the people around the, the property area, um, and some of the problems that had been, I know this, um, doesn't have any, what was the other mining permit that was on 27, some of the issues there, and we were under the stipulations that Babe still, was still a partner, but, uh, what's this, uh, the owner of the property said that he had bought it from Babe several years back. But that was after the meeting, when he came and talked to me after the meeting. And the issue is all the trucks, the narrow road, the erosion, and all that is why it was voted down.
I mean, uh, I mean, we're worried about the red mud now, yes, there's gonna be some red mud, but a mining permit, it's gonna be watched closely, and I think that's part of your job is stormwater and erosion, and then once they get this complaint and build a subdivision, the red mud and the pictures is gonna be gone.
The issue that we had talked about also is Michael had mentioned in the meeting, going from R2 to A1, and then in two or three years, going back to R2. Just for the purpose of the mining.
So, what other options would there be?
He can build a subdivision on it now.
He can.
He can build a subdivision on it now. He just couldn't strip, he just couldn't use it as a barpin.
Well, I mean, you could move the dirt off of it.
That's what I'm saying, he could build a subdivision and remove whatever dirt he had needed to move.
Couldn't take it off site.
Yeah, you, you could take it off site, because, I mean, they're, they are up there at that new subdivision on Happy Valley.
Sure, you have a mining permit?
Yeah, yeah, I, I have, I see it all the time.
Engineered plans, solar erosion.
So, we agree that you can export it?
I do, I do agree with that.
You would have to have plans for the subdivision, an engineered plan, is, I mean, they're moving over 3,000 loads on Happy Valley right now.
Well, that was coming anyway, I mean, it's subdivision, you'd have to have a before and after grade, but, you know, it's, I don't, what the, the issue, what was the problem with that? I mean, I know, why is it a problem?
It was just being, it was just being questioned, that you would be going from, uh, as, an R2 zoning to an A1.
To an R2.
Then back to an R2, it's just like, is that step necessary? I think that's kind of was the question. Why, why would that need to be done if he submitted subdivision plans, had all of that calculated by solar erosion and approved through by the RCS and all of those procedures, then he may still could accomplish the same goal.
So, we agree that he can export with an approved subdivision plan?
If it meets all the guidelines, you know, through the approval process, there is a pathway to, to, to do that, is what we're talking about.
You can move dirt off site without a mining permit, I mean, it happens every day. But you have to have the correct plans in place, and they have to be approved.
What, what drove y'all to hire KC to draw this mining plan? Somebody told you how to do it? There was, I mean, the issue was they had been told they couldn't export.
By who?
I don't know. But that's why, that was the.
That'd be a good que, that'd be a good answer, I'd like to know, is where that, where that came from.
That's what initiated that. But, he just, Mr. Houston just wants to, like he said, he's not a dirt seller, he doesn't want to have a church pit.
Right.
I mean, he's gonna get it done as soon as he can, regardless, and his, he builds houses, it's, so.
Can I ask a question? If they do that, who has control over making sure, they own that property and the house since 2017. We have a problem with their dirt issue now, who regulates, if they start hauling dirt out of there, that we're not gonna have the same mess the whole time they're doing it?
Now, which entrance are we talking about?
Either one.
Well, the north entrance has two other houses dumping water into that spot. The house to the north has an asphalt driveway that runs all the way down the road. There's no tile, all the water just comes off of it, and either goes into the road or turns south. The house to the south has a driveway that runs across the corner of this property. So, in order to, he can't fix, he can fix his end of her driveway, but unless she agreed to let him go in and fix the grade on the driveway, there's a drainage ditch right there that her driveway crosses.
And if we got.
The door and everything needs to be turned to that, but her driveway, she has an easel by use, I guess, across the south corner, and they have no control over her side of the line. So, they can't just go and turn water on the earth. You know, they could fix the driveway, her driveway, pretty easily, and make the water turn either way, then that water wouldn't be going to the, the low spot, which the entrance to this property is the low spot, coming from both ways. And there's no drain tiles, you know, it's just not, the road hasn't been, you know, it's just not been done. You know, there's a few things that could be done with the ditching and all, that haven't been done.
Well, my, I was gonna answer your question, the, the runoff, stormwater, and erosion, and things like that, that, that'd be Mr. Brown at, at our, he, he handles our erosion control and stormwater management. If his problems, like these pictures are showing, then we need to go over and address that with, with the, you know, the other property owners as well, it would appear to me. If it's not all just coming from, from one property, it's coming from several, then that needs to be addressed as well.
Mr. Houston's wanting to do whatever, I mean.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what's the definition of exporting, sir? I have an idea what that means, but I would care definition, and I'll have a follow up to that. When, when you're exporting dirt off of the site, what's?
Removing it.
You're, you're removing it, but, and under R2, if you're doing subdivision development, and you, you can move dirt around, I understand that, if you have to take the, take material off the side, are you allowed to sell it offsite, or you have to deposit it into another location?
True, I know.
Run crews do cut.
That, that would be up to the property owner, I mean, it's your, yeah, I think. If he wanted to give it away or sell it, I mean, that wouldn't be up to us.
Yeah, that'd be a disgrace to the property owner.
So, so, so to follow up with that, in these discussions from last week, last week it was gonna be moved dirt for a year. Tonight, it's moved dirt for 18 months to two years, then it ended up being maybe three years. We don't know how long we're gonna be moving dirt. We're not building subdivision, we're moving dirt. We're selling dirt, is what they're trying to do.
Well, it was.
They're trying to, they're, they're not going agriculture, they want to go mining, they want to go commercial mining.
I mean, we suggested doing it, trying it for, if you had some way to approve it for a year, just come in in a year and see what you're doing. We're not saying, like Mr. Houston said, I mean, it's basically just calling him a liar. I mean, he's not interested in selling dirt, he wants to build a subdivision. Their position is your life.
But he could build a subdivision, as it is now, he could go and build a subdivision, had it designed however he chooses to pay someone to design it, and if they designed it to, to level, for instance, the, down here by the Walmart, they come in there and they, you know, so, according to the design plan, but he's got the right with the way it's, with the zoning now, to build a subdivision, if that's what he wanted to do.
So, we all, I mean, we all agree that he can export according to that provision?
Didn't say that, so he can build a subdivision.
Before that, I mean.
I would like to hear what Mr. Campbell said, because Mr. Campbell does subdivision drawings also, it's something.
Well, he was doing that. Yeah, but, for some, y'all spent a lot of money on this, and he, I don't understand why, they were told they couldn't export.
By who?
I don't know.
I'm sure.
About a year ago, it's been going.
I'm sure it was a mining division, as we believe.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
That's what I'm thinking, Shane.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, we need to understand what those regulations are.
We do.
Because we have it, because it happens every day, not just in this county, but all over the state, and all over every state around us.
Yeah, I don't know.
We need to tell you this until the.
We're gonna have, I think we'll have.
Should we table it and get some answers from KC and APD and?
I mean, I think we need to, just to cover everybody, I think we need to make sure we know what we're.
I agree with you.
I mean, Mr. Houston, really doesn't matter to him, the land, as you, from the topo, is basically useless until it's fixed.
But, but again, like, like, like Robert Martin's saying. Y'all didn't draw these just to, just to spend some money, somebody told you you had to have them, so. And I don't know who they, I mean, who they is, we need some more information.
I mean, it's just, we're, it's, it's a, the way they're wanting to do it is not necessarily any worse, it's just nobody does it that way. I mean, it's not like, as long as they end up with that finished grade for the subdivision, where they're gonna be.
Well, I think one, one thing could be too, if it goes for two, three, four years before you would ever come back and want to rezone, you're, you could have a whole different group of people sitting here then, possibly.
Is there anything, I mean, like I said, is there any way to have some shorter period, you know, here, let's come back in a year? Is there a temporary, is there a temporary zone? Do we have any temporary zone?
I think a lot of it, but.
Not that I'm aware of.
I think the misunderstanding was, and, uh, Ms. Martin is the one that started this for late. And she presented us as they want to have, they want to split mining and build a subdivision at the same time. That's the way it was presented to us, not, not mine it, not export it, then build, but it was together.
See, that, that's how a, a normal subdivision, like I said, if you were building a subdivision, they go in, you're clearing a subdivision lot. If you're putting a basement house in, you, and, and you dig the dirt out, it doesn't necessarily stay on that lot, it doesn't necessarily stay in that subdivision, it could go to, to your, your neighbor down the way, or whatever, so. I, I think we need to understand for sure where the state regulations are on the exporting, and, and I, I don't, I don't think we have a clear understanding of what the state requirements would. of what the state requirements would be there for the ex, when we talk about exporting or, or removing. Uh, because like, I, I just, I know you can build a subdivision on it right now. And like I said, I know there's a lot of, I built several subdivisions. There's a lot of dirt to be moved and, and, you know, that can all be, of course, an erosion control plan and all that in place. And then all that's approved, it, it's, it's kind of a mute point. That's why I, I, I'm like Brian. I don't understand why we've, we've gone through all this if you, we didn't, we, we really don't have to. And, and that's why I want, I think we want to better understand.
Yeah, if the board decided, you know, to table this, and that'd give you a couple of weeks to help get these answers. Maybe KC could be here, check with EPD. Just kind of puts it all on hold for two weeks until you can get that additional info.
Do you know who to talk, who we're talking to? Who they've been talking to? There's somebody they've been talking to. So I get with you and then...
We have a rep from the town of mining that comes up here.
Uh-huh.
I'm making motion to table.
I'll say it.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to table it. A second. My Commissioner asks you to table this until our next meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll table this until our next scheduled meeting.
I just have one question. Is, is it like this every two weeks? Close. Y'all are... Whatever it is.
Exactly right.
Okay, uh, next on our agenda is Commissioner comments. So Commissioner Blakemore?
Appreciate everybody coming out and being involved and giving us your opinion. That helps us better make decisions. If I can help in any way, call, text, email. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your attendance. Like I said, anybody that has any questions or concerns can reach out to any of us at any time. Like Commissioner Blakemore said, and I say it every week, uh, the participation from you folks is what helps us to, to better govern and, and make better decisions. So we, we want you to be here. We want to hear what your thoughts are. And then we want to take all that and try to make the best decisions that we can for the community. Thank you.
Agreed. Agreed to everything he said. School starts next week in Walker County, so watch out for the school buses, teachers and stuff going back to school. Seems like it just got out, so...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate everybody coming tonight. Want to thank all of our county employees for the hard work that they do. Uh, there is gonna be a back-to-school bookbag and supply giveaway uh, this Saturday at the Cedar Grove Community Center on West Cove Road from 9:00 a.m. till noon. It's a very nice event. And, uh, again, thanks, everyone, for coming. Appreciate it.
All right, I don't have any additional comments. Appreciate everybody's comments and concur with what they said. So that will end our Commissioner's comments. Uh, we want to do an executive session.
When I took Brody to the department.
Okay, so we need, we have a motion for an executive session by Commissioner Blakemore.
Say it.
Have a second. My Commissioner asks you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll stand adjourned until we have our executive session and hopefully we'll be back quickly. Okay, it is, uh, it's 10:59. It's still Thursday, July the 24th. We just adjourned or come out of our executive session. There's no further action of the board tonight, so do we have a motion to officially adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Take it.
Second from Commissioner Stoltz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. I think those are mine.
About yours?